I'll call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners, Lincoln County, May 28th, 2019, if you'd like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's start with the minutes. I have been informed that we will only have the two of us here tonight. So, I apologize if there's something that we needed the three of us to discuss, but we will be having our regular end-of-the-month meeting on Friday morning, and it looks like it'll be at nine o'clock. Is that okay? Can you do nine?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a regular meeting from May 20th and a special meeting from May 23rd in the minutes. From those meetings, a little brief overview. We discussed the nursing home. Mr. Lowman was going to contact John Grace with a list of items that we'd like to discuss with him here at the table. We had some identification of some road issues on 120th and Fox Drive. We reviewed the hospital budget and sent it back with a few questions and requests for review. Dawn, that's not the minutes. Did you already contact him, though?
Who?
Mr. Granzo, to let him know.
It's down for her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we discussed it.
You're right. Yeah.
I wasn't sure if I should move it all together.
No, that's fine. You're right. It was in order. LAPP visited. We had a discussion with the Highway Department. We had an executive session with one of the employees. We discussed health insurance agencies that we may be contracting to, to take care of some of our HR responsibilities. We approved the resignation from the interim ambulance director. We declared a state of local disaster, which is being requested that we continue due to the flooding and the weather damage. And then for the special meeting, we conducted an interview, an executive session, and then after the executive session, let's see, how did we do that? We re-approved the resignation that was received after discussing the correspondence. We moved the ambulance license from the State Board to the name of the Commissioners of Lincoln County. And we did approve to extend the job offer to the person that we interviewed for the EMS position, which we were combining the offer with that and HR. And adjournment. Do you see any corrections?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 20th, 2019, and also the May 23rd minutes for 2019.
I second. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What resolution number will this be, Dawn?
It should be 12, 2019-12.
Okay. Correspondence from the emergency management requested that we extend, so that would be a new resolution, number 12. And I read it last week, but basically it just says that we are in the state of loss of life or property in disaster proportion. And that just means that we're going to be potentially receiving funding if we would apply for some of the federal money that comes down through disaster reclamation, I'll call it, for lack of a better term. So today is the 28th. Would you like to move to extend with a new resolution?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to move to extend Resolution 12 and proclamation, which is for the emergency, the local disaster emergency for Lincoln County. Do we need Aljo here to all three say the church or just to?
No, I'll second.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Would you like to read the bills, please, we've received for billing from Lincoln Park Manor?
You sign this.
Yeah, I will.
From Hayworth Plumbing, we got a bill for Lincoln Park Manor for $273.
This is your package from the hospital.
Then Pro Bigot, we got a bill from Phoenix Supply Company, Salina, Lincoln Park Manor, $46 for repaired glass, repelled glass and cleaner. Street Plumbing, they replace these heads on these water softener. We've had a problem with the water softener there, with not working. They finally got to doing that. Those were expensive. Two heads, $3,782 for two heads, and then $812 for levers, so $5,470 to fix the water softener up at the Lincoln Park Manor. Lincoln Building Supply, paint for Lincoln Park Manor, $31. Leather paint, brown paint, some more, Lincoln Building Supply, $9. Cummings, Lincoln County Clerks for the Lincoln Park Manor, for Cummings Generator, I guess, they gen-set operating properly. They just do a test on it or a service call to it. $758 for the generator set and service call, Lincoln Park Manor.
Isn't that under the warranty yet?
I don't know.
We signed a contract for a yearly amount that was a set rate for three years, I believe. It did have an increase on the third year. I think it was the same rate for two years. So I'm assuming, I think it's a quarterly payment that we have to make, but by state regulation, we have to have it, what is the word? Whatever their inspection is.
Yeah, it's like a service inspection, isn't it?
Are that all the bills?
We have, that's Aljo's, but that's no bill. That's just, that's a bill as well.
I'm not sure what this leather paint means.
That's paint.
Yeah, but that's, we had approved to paint a portion of the building, but that, I think that has been completed, that portion of the project. Do you know what leather paint is? Did anyone say anything?
Leather colored, I think. Brown leather paint. I don't know either what the heck that is.
Sometimes in the view, it was.
There's a brown leather paint.
Oh, maybe that's the door that, didn't we just get a new door?
Oh.
Yeah, we had one new door, one outside, south of the kitchen there. Yeah, that's for Hayward. There's this fixing the heads on the water softener, is a big one there.
So, then, I do not believe that we should be paying for cleaning supplies, glass and surface cleaner. I mean, if you want to approve that, you can do that with Mr. Wallace, but I'm not going to sign that one. The rest of them we've committed to prior.
I will put that off till later, then.
Okay.
You'll approve them. Do we need a motion to approve it?
No.
You'll sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you have an objection.
No, that's fine.
May I ask, what would your total be? Was it that group?
I need talking here.
Here.
I'll do so.
Is the water softener something you bid on?
No.
They just tell them how about it?
They just called in for a repair. Through the course of the time that I've been involved, everything that they've needed a repair on, that the maintenance person can do themselves, they've done. This is an interesting situation, because the maintenance person that was employed there is now employed by Street Plumbing, and they called in to have this particular, which this is an issue that looks like maybe it's, I mean, you needed parts and things like that, so maybe it's not something that the person on grounds can keep track of or do themselves. But basically, they've just been able to go to Lincoln Building Supply, Street Plumbing, and that was, the other bill was for Hayward, and order what they've needed. Most of the time, we have been paying for the materials and the labor has been taken care of. Depends on the issue. I mean, we actually have paid to unclog toilets and things like that if the maintenance person wasn't available at the time. There's not been requirement for bids like that. I actually didn't know it was going to be that kind of an expense. We weren't really told that. They were still trying to figure out what was wrong. So, no, it was not bid out, to answer your question. There hasn't been any stipulation put on how they can order repairs, because they've basically been doing that through the week, and then we get the bill on Monday. Does that make sense?
The total is $6,592 bucks, approximately, I give it.
That would seem like a good prior approval.
I don't disagree, really.
Well, we somewhat did give them approval. Water softeners weren't working, and they had, I talked to Street and them guys about that, they had to fix those heads, and they were late with getting them in, and we even talked to Roger Hayward about it, and he even went up there and looked in, too, and he thought possibly could fix them and not get new ones, but then, but Street had them ordered, and then they came in, Roger just said, "Go ahead, let Street put them in," because they are, those were the heads that needed to be, they're specially made for that water softener, whatever, anyway, that's what I was told. So, I don't know if you could bid them. You could probably bid them to somebody else, but I don't think it'd make any cheaper, because that's a special type of deal for that water softener. That's what I understood. Yeah, it's a lot of money, so $6,500 bucks, yeah, $5,000 for this water softener fix, so. It's expensive, that nursing home's expensive. The hospital's expensive, too. We don't see all the hospital bills, but look at all their maintenance expenses, once, but that's handled through the hospital board. All this stuff's expensive, obviously.
I'm going to move on to our next correspondence. Well, I guess this is just what we need to approve as our correspondence. We had received notification that we were awarded the grant money, which we matched with a percentage, to do the assessment that's needed for the Historical Society, so that we can start the repairs that need to be done on this particular courthouse. So we have some steps as an issue, and we talked about potentially, if we get the grant money, repainting all the wood, and you can see all the window casings and everything, or wooden and chipped peeling. So we have to approve signing our acceptance letter, and this also designates Don Harlow as the project administrator, so it's, to Ms. Ringler, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners would like to accept the grant award in the amount of $13,300. Don Harlow will attend the project administrator orientation on Friday, June 7th, at 10:00 AM.
Okay. Kelly, do you have any input on this or anything?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve the acceptance letter to the Kansas Historical Society.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further questioning or comment? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have received the Fair Board budget for 2019 as a correspondence, and... Did you see this, or is this one, did you get?
I've never seen it.
I'm not looking for it now.
Look.
I guess.
Look there.
Can it really be less than last year?
I don't know.
Fair Board budget?
Yeah.
There's probably a county allocation, if you, if I didn't look at it.
Can go two times a year, eight maybe? Can't remember.
Okay, so it looks like they're requesting the same amount as last year, which was the $10,000, from what I see. Anybody on Fair Board? Is that what it looks like to me? Same amount?
I don't remember the exact figure. I think.
It was 10, even. Okay. Thank you. And then we have a revised budget approval. Do we need to approve this, Dawn, for Gerald Philbrick for the bus transportation?
I think it's letting you know what it is for the next year.
Okay. 2020, the grant award, okay, the state's portion.
I mean, he has to work out what the county portions is, which we budget $20,000, so we're going to need to increase.
$729.60, it looks like it's short. And then a note, can we meet who on Friday, May 31st?
That was.
Aljo.
Oh, earlier.
Aljo wants to meet.
Some names.
Yeah, that was chicken scratch.
I got you.
He wants to do it at nine.
Okay, so we'll be here at nine on Friday. And I think that concludes the course of work.
We don't want to deal with his budget today for the fair.
No, I, we'll just put that in and then.
And that's either Philbrick's deal.
Right, with that, yeah. Sounds good. Okay, so Cynthia Nelson, please.
I will attempt to get that. Thank you. I'm just wanting to bring you up on, to date, on the Silver-haired legislators and the area agency meetings and what we're doing. And I'll give an extra copy to Dawn to give to Aljo. Just so that you know, when it's ever referred to the Silver-haired legislators, we are in PSA 8, and so that's the map that shows where all of the agencies are, and it gives you the names of the executive directors, should you ever want to contact and compare anything, and you could. On the page two is the Silver-haired legislators that are appointed and/or elected for the PSA 8, or PS8, and their addresses. There's still five openings for five different counties. And then on the third page is the Silver-haired legislator announces their new website, and you can read that at your leisure. It's kansas-shl.org, and it'll have all of the information that is, that they are on their resolutions of what they're trying to get passed for seniors. And know that they operate separately from the area agency on aging. So there, sometimes there's overlapping, but usually it's, it doesn't necessarily mean that what the Silver-haired legislators are working towards is the same thing that the area agency on aging is, especially on funding. Which then, when you turn to the next page, it shows you that there are resolutions that we came up with for 2019 Kansas legislator that was approved in January, and it's been approved by the House, these were, and then they went to the Senate, and who knows what's happening after that. And just to go over them a little briefly, and they're numbered, and you can check with the website to see how they are progressing. This is monies, again, for the seniors, but not necessarily is it just for seniors. In other words, seniors take up issues that would benefit everyone in the state of Kansas.
But what committee are they taking these to? When they make these?
It depends on to the House.
Oh, okay.
First, they go to the House. And there, we have a speaker, whose name I forgot, Dawn, and then recently elected a pro-tem speaker, and that's Chuck Schmidt out of Wichita, from Hayes originally.
Okay.
So that's really who the Silver-haired legislators go through. And then he, we're not supposed to use the word lobby, we educate, which means that we talk to them about why it would be beneficial.
Well, if you're lobbying, you'd have to get paid.
I know, but, you know. When it gets down to it, fine line. So for part of it is the full funding for capers, the support for COLA, the expansion of Medicaid, which you probably know was lost by one vote this time around, and when some of the senators were interviewed, they said, "Well, it was an election year coming up next, so that maybe they'll use it as their campaign." Who knows? And then continued support for K.Roe Public Transportation Program. They want full funding for the Senior Care Act, which allows seniors to stay in their own homes, provide services for an average of $240 per month. It's never been funded fully in the state of Kansas. In Resolution 3606, financial support for grandparents, which did pass to serve as legal guardians, and it also includes aunts and uncles and siblings that could, if in an emergency, take the kids, rather than going into foster care.
And to have to file paperwork and then get them back out, yeah.
In the state of Kansas, may not be a good deal in foster care. That's, you know, quite an issue. And then, here's an interesting one. We have support for the establishing of sports wagering in Kansas, with the profits designated for senior programs. So especially increased funding for the Senior Care Act. That's kind of gone back and forth, because it's connected to greyhound racing. And then also, the big one that's gotten a lot of talk is our allowance of the use of medical cannabis for Kansas, for all of the different health issues that seniors have. And our last resolution was removing the sales tax on food in the state of Kansas and replacing the lost revenue by adding sales tax on internet sales, and that's nationally really controversial. So those are the resolutions, the Silver-haired legislator, out of 30-some resolutions that were brought forward, these are the ones that.
They're on the agenda now.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
None of them have been approved, because they were approved by the House and sent to the Senate, so we'll see what happens from there. So, but you can go to the website and follow them.
Every last one of those are approved by the House.
Yes. Yeah. And I have a whole bunch of other material on that, that just did make copies of it for you all. Then just the last page is the upcoming meetings at important dates of what we're all doing, and you'll note that September 17th is the Sunflower Fair, which is the senior kind of whoop-de-doo that we have every year, and that involves Lincoln County, in that every county has a nominee of who their Sunflower Fair person will represent, Lincoln County for this year, and nominations are being accepted right now. And what we really want is for the whole county to be considered, not just a certain council or a certain senior center or whatever, but for the whole county to think of people who have done volunteer work for seniors, or volunteer work in any way that if they are a senior, that they would be nominated. And so those nominations can be picked up from Keynotes, which you may, I don't know if you guys, do you guys get copies of Keynotes, by the way?
I get it. Still my parents' name.
Uh-huh, well, okay. And then those forms, if you, supposedly, if you contact any senior center or the Council on Aging or myself, we can get the forms to you for people who are nominated. And we've had, we'd like to see it, like, lots of people nominated, and then what usually happens is the area agency on aging will have a time that they set up where they go through the applications or the nominations and pick a person from that pile. In years past, there's maybe been only one, so it's been that way. And that's all I really have that's pertinent of bringing you up to date, other than I've been to Glen Elder for a meeting, Topeka for two meetings, and Salina for a meeting, so, on the road. And if there are any questions that you guys think about, that you need, other than, you know, you can call Julie for their representative for this area, but again, I'm just letting you know that we operate separately as far as the legislature. So it's just kind of a separate branch, just to make sure that everything is going the way that we would like to see it go, as far as seniors staying in their homes.
Who wrote the resolutions?
It was a whole.
Collaborative?
Yes, yeah, it was interesting, and we went back and forth and doing, J. Rowe, by the way, is your, is the president of the, or chair, if you want to call it, of the Silver legislators for our area. He was last year, and he was renominated again for another two-year term. And it was really interesting, I mean, you throw them all in a pile, and then you vote, and then it's like, how many of, three of the top highest, and then they go back again, and back and forth and back and forth, and the one that came up the highest, of course, was the Medicaid expansion. And it did not pass. It was one that will go to the next session, next year. One that is still being argued on, and I, we have a lot of support for is the tax on food. It's so high in Kansas, it's just.
Well, yeah, in Pennsylvania, there is no tax on clothing or food. I'm not sure there ever was, so they didn't have a deficit to make up by taking it away.
Right. You have to look at all of that to consider where it is, so.
Now, you coordinate, it was like you was at the Council on Aging, Lincoln County, today. You coordinate what you're doing with them.
We report what we're doing, and we emphasize what we'd like to see.
Do you support them, or they support you, or how does that work?
Normally, there is a contribution from the area agencies to, which would be the Manhattan office, in our case, in this area.
Now, they, you guys help fund the meals right here for the Lincoln seniors.
Yeah, that's a total separate.
That's a different deal.
That's totally separate, and the meals are from the French, or the burger.
And that's confusing, too, I think, a lot of us here.
I know, a lot of people.
Because you got your Flint Hills Council on Aging deals with our senior center with meals, and then you deal with the Lincoln Council on Aging, which is a different group, which concentrates more on what?
The meals are completely by the area agency on aging.
Right, okay. And you're involved with them, right? That's who you are here, right?
Well, in a sense, and actually, it's a separate, we're separate from them, you know. We deal with them and the fact that we need to find a place that has a good kitchen, and we need, because our concern is what's best for seniors.
Yeah.
And, of course, these meals can be given at any 501(c)(3), doesn't have to be a senior center.
But you're saying, the separation between the Silver-haired legislature and the Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging.
They're separate, okay.
They're separate. We like to think of ourselves as a watchdog.
Well, you're not receiving funding, right?
Right.
Right, so this is a panel of people who get involved with the actual legislation, like these resolutions.
And you don't even have to be silver-haired.
But the area agency on aging is funded through the Senior Care Act and this.
Correct.
This Older Americans Act, so it's a state and federally funded agency. They're not, she's not on the agency, she's on the board of the legislature.
I'm on two things. I am on the board, the 18-county board.
Of the agency, Flint Hills.
Yes, but it oversees what the executive director and what, how their staffing, how the money is spent.
Okay.
Wait.
This is all confusing to me. I've told you this before.
Well, now, I'm confused, too.
But Silver-haired legislature is a separate.
That's what I'm saying.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. But you're on, but you are on the legislature, which you weren't.
For Lincoln County.
Now you are.
Yeah, I took.
But you were first on the board for.
Richard's place, Les Richards, that's who I took, his place as a Silver-haired legislator.
Okay, okay, but you were on the board first for area agency on aging.
Correct, right. And many are, that's kind of how they are found out, that they're involved in senior activities and senior programs, and there is a difference between a program and an activity of what, how you want to fund them. And, you know, I just, you know, want to compliment the county commission for wanting to provide programs with that mill levy money that is given, because, you know, that's the main purpose of it. In fact, one of the representatives today from Manhattan, again, encouraged the agency on aging here in Lincoln County to think about programs for the seniors, like how you're not out of line in asking for what programs are you providing.
Right, right. Now, we have questions in to the county attorney for her to get back to the wording on our resolution, the original copy of what the public mill levy vote was, et cetera, so hopefully we can get some.
And there's all kinds of programs available that don't cost anything, it's just connecting to that, that's networking with those programs that are, can be available.
Becky Rappin, now, handling Council on Aging here, and the senior center, right, both, director of both, so she's coordinating both of that, learning, you know, taking over the Lincoln Council on Aging director, correct?
That's a good question.
Yeah, no, I think she is.
I don't have an answer to that.
Well, I'm pretty sure, but so, but she has to learn more than what she had been doing. I think she's doing good so far, so, anyway, that's all I got.
It's, the main place is that she's the site manager for the senior center.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know exactly what her role is, or the definition of her role with the agency on aging.
Okay.
They were working on a job description, I, you know, I don't know what the final round looks like, but I remember.
It was basically to replace Mrs. Richards' positions and providing a ship.
Yeah, Becky's doing it now, they hired her. That's part of the, all right. I don't have any more, you.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
You betcha.
Kelly, are you representing the countywide Healthy Living Master Plan Committee?
I am, because they choose me to speak.
Fine, I'm on down.
You can maybe just give that to, well, leave it.
No, I got one for all of you. So this is Aljo, one for each of you, yeah.
Yeah, I'm out of, well, I will just leave it there for you, thanks.
We have a lot of overflow out into the hallway, so, Kelly, we're gonna go ahead and continue with you here, and then we'll take a brief recess to move up to the courtroom, so that we can accommodate everyone.
I might guess that a few people...
Will leave?
Will leave after this, so...
Well, you just took away all the fun. Okay, well, then maybe we won't, but that, they said they'd wait out in the hall till you're done with this plan. Oh, this is Aljo's.
That's yours.
I have one, I'll put this in the mail.
Oh, okay, yeah. I can put that, yeah. You want us to review this, or you want to talk to us now?
Well, I think what I'm, what I'll do is, I'm gonna tell you, cut to the chase and say what the ask is, but then I'm gonna kind of do a little bit of history and background and kind of talk about what's in this plan. And then you guys can kind of ask for some questions. And if anybody else wants to talk, welcome to it. Jennifer Hill's outside in the hall, she's welcome to jump in with filming, too. But, anyway, um, so, the ask is that, over the last year and a half or so, the strategic, one of the strategic doing committees was really focused on active, healthy, living, outdoor amenities types of projects. And our project that we, that came out of this is to do a Healthy Living Master Plan for the county that include all the communities. And so the specific ask for tonight is that the county commission adopts this master plan. We've talked to the Sylvan City Council and Lincoln City Councils so far, and both of them have adopted it. So we're asking for the commission to adopt as well, mostly as, because when it comes to grant applications, it, it looks good to show that there's a lot of support behind this, that there's, um, it's not just one little group. It's, you know, us trying to work together to improve the whole county and that all these different jurisdictions have bought into it and agree with it. So, so that's the ask. But I guess I'm gonna just step back for a minute and do a little bit of history. Well, actually, I'll do some introductions. So, the strategic doing group, that, again, was part of the very first big meeting and formed out of that, we really focused, want to make sure that we had representation from all over the county. But the primary organizers have been Colleen Biggs, Craig Sturts, Cheryl Gere, Galen Zier, Jennifer Hill, out in the hall somewhere. Oh, right there, sorry. I can't wait. Jessica Coleman, I don't know if she's gonna be able to make it tonight. Krista Biggs, Mary Ann Sturts, Steve Boer, Taylor Labine, I'm not sure if she was able to make it, and then myself. So we've been the primary organizers behind this and the key people working and getting together and meeting. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background, for the last few years, even before this whole strategic doing process got started, there's been a lot of conversation about more outdoor amenities, healthy living types of things, quality of life types of things. You know, if anybody who lives in a city somewhere, you know you've got access nowadays to good trails, walking paths, so forth. And really, you know, a lot of people want those kinds of things. It's, it's becoming an expectation, I think, for communities to, to have these certain amenities. And even though Lincoln and Sylvan Grove are small communities, if we want to attract our people to come back, or new people to come back, you know, these are the types of things that they, that they think about. Is it a decision-maker all the time? Probably not, but it certainly helps to make that decision to move here. So, anyway, back in 2015, the Live Healthy Lincoln County Coalition formed, and this was, again, an idea of bringing all the different municipalities, organizations, together underneath one coalition to talk about how do we improve the health and well-being of citizens in the county. At that time, the group hired RGG, RDG Planning and Design to do a survey and put some recommendations together. We had, again, a committee at that time, and there was a lot of conversation and ideas, but really, we didn't have a sense of the direction, what's our priority? So, they came in, there was grant funding that brought, that was able to hire them, and they surveyed state, different stakeholder groups in all the different communities. They did online surveys, and they, I think, they, they met with just individuals and so forth, and did a lot of community input to try and figure out what, what do people see as a top priority? And at that time, back in 2016, when they were wrapping up, the top priorities that came out of that for the county would be providing connectivity within communities. That would be like sidewalks, connecting the downtowns with the schools, to help promoting safe walk, safe routes to schools, the parks, and then the different key places within the community, such as the fairgrounds in Sylvan and the park and so forth here in town. So that connecting, providing connectivity within communities, developing trails and walking paths, that was another priority, and then creating a wellness center in the county. Those were the top things that came out of, of that plan, and that was back in 2016. In 2017, I had an intern work for me that summer, and the idea is, is, okay, if we have providing connectivity and trails as one of the top priorities that people want to see here, our committee, we were kind of talking, I felt like we were talking with and designing with hand gestures. You know, there was a lot of ideas out there, but there was never any place where we're actually looking all at the same drawing. So the idea with the intern that I had at that time was to take all these different ideas, take the information that RDG put together, all the community input. We did even more community input. There was meetings in Sylvan and Lincoln and Barner about what people would like to see specifically with those trails and sidewalks. And then he put, basically, put it on paper. He took all those designs and kind of came up with a broad conceptual vision for what these walking paths and trails look like. So then, as that internship was wrapping up in 2017, then the, the strategic doing process started. So the Dane Hansen Foundation in the twenty-seven northwest Kansas counties, they've been working with all the community foundations on strategic doing. The idea is, is how do we think bigger, how do we think broader, how do we think about those big, long-term picture projects that are gonna really move the counties forward? Dane Hansen is a huge funder of projects in this whole area, and they wanted to see, you know, projects that were really, you know, not just kind of helping with a, a need right now, but actually moving us towards these long-term goals. And so, that was the idea with the strategic doing process. So with that, there's been several strategic doing meetings. The first one was a very big, very broad meeting where, again, we bring in people from across the county to talk, what are the big ideas that people really want to focus on? There were seven projects that kind of trickled to the top at that time. And one of them, so it was sort of a collection of projects. There was splash pads, there was the walking paths and trails again, and there was just kind of a whole host of different ideas. And so, that, at that time, that's when the people who were really passionate about those ideas decided, let's all come together as one group, instead of having all these little groups, let's come together as one group to talk about how do we move these projects along. As the committee started to get started, I think what we realized is that, you know, we've been talking about this stuff for several years, you know, by this time. And it seemed like the big hurdle, why any of them have really struggled to move forward, is because, you know, we didn't necessarily, although we knew what we wanted in our heads, we didn't necessarily have a plan that we could go and ask for grant funding. If you want to apply for a grant, you have to have a plan, and you have to have solid cost estimates. And those were the things that none of us had on any of these projects that we wanted to move forward with. So that's what we've decided to focus on as our specific strategic doing project, is let's put these high-priority projects all together, let's hire a consultant who's gonna provide the expertise that none of us had. You know, although we have the passion and the vision for it, you know, we don't necessarily know how to do the cost estimates or some of that very early technical engineering kind of things to, to help us move to that next level. So we were able, as strategic doing, we were able to ask for a grant from both the Post-Track Community Foundation and the Dane Hansen Foundation for $23,000 total, to hire Schwab-Eaton out of Lloyd. And they met with us on several occasions to talk about, you know, what really are we trying to achieve with each of these projects? We started with actually probably twenty different projects, and when we, you know, we came to the budget, and how are we gonna do this? We really narrowed it down to, to just eight, eight to ten projects. And the idea, though, is to have them come in, give us their engineering expertise on all these different projects. They are very familiar with all the different grant resources that are out there, so they could write the plan in a way that's specific for different grant programs. And so the idea with this plan is we've, although it's one plan, anybody who's passionate about any one of these particular projects can pull that piece out and use it to apply for a grant. There's enough information there to put, to have a scope of work and cost estimates and so forth that, that, you know, we can actually put together what I think would be a solid grant application. So that brings us to today. We got the plan back a month or so ago. Like I said, Sylvan City Council has adopted it, Lincoln has adopted it as well. We would like the county commission to adopt it. A couple notes, and before I talk about any specific project in it, there are some really big numbers in there. If you, if you look at the cost estimates, we are totally aware of that. You know, I think there's a lot of things where we can probably, as a step one, do a much simpler project and ease our way into the big vision project, but we, we need to know what the big vision is. And there's some other things, too, where that's a total project cost. And, you know, maybe through our own donations and so forth, you know, we don't necessarily have to fundraise all of that or ask anybody for all of that. But it is kind of the, the grand goal here. You know, we were challenged to think big, and so that's what the, I think, the master plan shows. So, this is intended to be a long-term plan. We are not intending to have all of this done in a year by any means. This is something that, you know, we're looking for the long term, and because of the budget figures that are in there, it's a way, how can we figure out what the priorities are and then get ourselves in line for those grant fundings? You know, myself, when I look about at any project, you know, sometimes a project that you're trying to do right now, if you want a grant, I mean, that grant application might be a year out. And so you've got to get yourself into a position in order to, to apply and feel like you've got a competitive project. So that's just kind of overall background. To talk about a few specific projects in there, since I've been talking a lot, we want to provide a little bit of a break and just talk specifically about Sylvan.
Sure.
If you're on the spot.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I guess with the Sylvan projects, I know, again, I, we talked a lot about grant funding and safe routes to schools, alternative transportation grants and things like that through KDOT. And so those are, those figures to me are specific to, you're gonna apply for a grant like that. And KDOT requires some engineering and things like that. And one of the things with the Sylvan projects, I've looked into the Kansas Trails Council, and they have a thing called Trail in the Box, and it's a way to get a dirt trail for a very minimal amount, or almost nothing, mostly volunteer labor, and, and move one of those projects forward as, in regards to the trails, and then, you know, see if we use those, maybe we can move on to a bigger, better project. I guess one thing I want to say, too, is, I, I look at all those, and it, I guess with adopting that doesn't mean that every one of those is gonna go forward. It just gives us the opportunity to maybe look at a project like that and see if we can go forward with it. But, so, yeah, I don't know. In regards to Sylvan, that's supposedly, you know, I guess what I'm looking at is, what are, what, so I have, here's, I have some engineering schematics, and I can look at it and see where we can move forward with it if it's a possibility, and then, or maybe realize it's not, so...
And I guess those projects, so there's some silver, sidewalk improvements. So, again, connecting the school and the downtown and kind of the city park.
Yes.
There's...
Where the old railroad used to be in Sylvan, the city owns a lot of that. So connecting that to the rest of the sidewalks and to the rest of the, there's two city streets that were never completely formed, putting a trail along those, which is that drainage ditch all the way there. These park loop trails, is that what that is for each city? And then the, the cost estimates that are done, is that for concrete? Concrete. I think, I, I, I do believe the railroad portion of, and the one around the school is an aggregate trail in regards to Sylvans. It does say that. But the rest of it is all concrete. And again, that was, they went with concrete because if you're gonna apply for a KDOT alternative transportation grant, that's what they would put in. So obviously, those estimates would be different if you changed that to an aggregate trail. And again, either aggregate or concrete because then it does make it handicapped accessible. Because you can do other, other, other options that are probably cheaper and that then you have limited use, you know, have full range for everyone, so...
I think what's really smart, too, again, you know, with the high school loop trail, there's, there's a big number there, but through a trail in a box kind of thing, we can start small. We can do it for pretty, very inexpensively. But with that, it shows potential grant funders. There's people who have a will, they're gonna find a way, they, they've got a path, they can, and then just kind of show use, you know, so how many people are using this that can start providing justification for funding to get the aggregate trail and so forth? So, again, you can kind of ease into the bigger cost kind of thing on some of these projects. Any other thoughts on Sylvan stuff?
I would just interject that, you know, having the master plan, just take for instance, Splash Pad project in Sylvan, which is a very popular idea. But if you really get into the nuts and bolts of it, you realize it's not as easy as it sounds. The legwork has been done here in the master plan. So if somebody comes to city council and says, "Why can't we?" Well, here's the numbers, you know, this is why we're, you have to give, you know, some due consideration. So, you know, what we gained out of it, the legwork's already been done to establish that, so... Which makes our job a lot easier, too.
And there's a lot of good considerations, like for the Splash Pad, things that, I think, a lot of people, they think it's cool and great, but what are the things, the factors that actually have to go into it? So they've put together not a specific plan for a Splash Pad, but locating, you know, potential locations, what you should consider for locating it, what you should, should you consider for the kind of system that it should have, and kind of then a cost per square foot in terms of build it. So that way, you know, the city and the people who are gonna be behind it have an idea of, okay, what's, what's really gonna be in this and what are the decisions that are gonna have to be made coming up.
Is the plan for this to all be funded by grants? Would any county money have to be applied as a, you know, to, to get grants? A lot of times, you have to do a share with government money. Is that involved in that, or is there, in other words, are you gonna be asking for county money to help with that?
Well, there is a couple of projects coming up that, that will be a conversation at some point, and, and so I'll get to that. Overall, though, I would say with all of these projects, we definitely want to tap into as many grant funds as we can. However, every grant is going to require some kind of local match. So where that local match comes from, city, county, volunteers, donated materials, donations, Post-Track Community Foundation, Dane Hansen Grant, I mean, there's, there's other grant sources, too, that we can all pool together to get whatever that local match is. But certainly, there are some big grants out there that would be what our target is.
Right, I mean, because like, you can also use, I mean, labor, there, there's other ways to match that funding, and it can be in, you know, I mean, because county funding gets high labor.
In kind, labor and donations.
Yeah.
I have a few questions, just for those of you who can't see what I'm looking at. There's a project list, and it's not in alphabetical order, but it is kind of by region. And the total estimated cost comes to 4.83 million. And I'm kind of wondering two things. First is, is this just project cost to put the project up? There's no upkeep, maintenance afforded in any of these numbers, or?
I would say if you're, if you're talking about a Splash Pad, obviously, there's gonna be ongoing constant...
But even any of them, I mean, they're...
I would say, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you're gonna have to mow around it, you're gonna have to, I would say...
But that's not included in the numbers here. This is just to get the work contracted and someone to... This is just to get the work contracted and someone to come perform the work to put in the sidewalks or the trails or whatnot. This doesn't have any upkeep consideration. And then, so out of the 4.83 million, it's listed and not in numerical order either. So I'm just wondering, is this the priority list?
No. No, it's actually just a list and just a list of the projects that's to the group and to what the feedback that they've received would be most wanted by people in the county.
Do you have a priority of which you, what you would do first?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Actually, none of them are something that the group that put this plan forward will, the group of themselves do not plan on making any of that specifically happen. The book is so that somebody who wants those projects in their community can take that information, pursue how they want to do it, they want to do it the way that project says or different material, or how they could move it forward.
Okay, so your committee is not going to be the ones putting the grant requests in?
I'm not saying that they won't, anybody from any of those groups. I mean, like, as an example, I would like to move the water loop around the high school forward. And like I said, I pursued.
You individually, but I'm saying the committee that's been working on and got the grant to do this master plan, you're not necessarily in the process of creating a prioritization list and then requesting grant funding in a particular order for any of the projects?
No, it was basically for, because I feel like every person in the group was maybe from a different community and felt passionate about different projects.
A particular issue there.
And so probably those individuals would make, get a group, get together to make what project they, I mean, I know as an example, the sidewalks in Lincoln, they've begun the, they began Safe Routes for Schools. They did phase one of that already and had grant.
I grant for phase one, but.
This completes phase one.
Phase two, phase one is planning, but phase two is the construction of it.
So that was already kind of in motion and so that's, I think, but my understanding here was that this kind of helped complete phase one for Lincoln.
Okay.
So having this plan. And so that's an example of something that's kind of moved forward on its own, was kind of already a plan that had begun. And so all of them are kind of under that umbrella. I think, I guess I'd just like to reiterate that not any of them are expected to be done by adopting the plan. The plan was just that you support the idea of moving some of these projects forward or possibly any of it, because all of them would end up having to have approval from the government body to move them forward individually.
But none of this is actually county property, correct? It all looks like city property to me.
No, but there are a couple of things just to.
I guess the bridge that.
Yes, yeah. And I guess just to, so to kind of talk about Lincoln a little bit. The primary projects in Lincoln are, again, sidewalk improvements in terms of creating safe routes to school. We kind of, although it's not going to be every sidewalk improved in town, the idea is how can we kind of create a good loop around the downtown that connects to the different areas? Yes, the major collectors with the downtown and the schools. So, you know, at some point, any kid is going to be able to get on a good sidewalk and get to school. Or even for, you know, elderly people to walk around. You know, if you walk more than a half block anywhere in Lincoln, you know that you're going to end up on the street, probably within a half block. I mean, there's very few places where you have whole block lawns of great sidewalks that you can walk on. So sidewalk improvements. And I guess with that, just as kind of a note, Schwabe Eaton has been working with Beloit on safe routes to school programs for a number of years now. And they have just hit the million dollar mark in grant funding, grant funding, million dollars in grant funding for sidewalks in Beloit. So they are very aware of how, what needs to be done to get safe routes to schools funding. So there are grants, big grants out there and other communities are working towards them. So that's something that, you know, I think both of our communities would like to work on as well. Another project in Lincoln is walking trail improvements. This would be a safe routes to school. If you're going to go to the downtown to the high school, there would be a piece of that path that would go through the city park. But the walking trail would be to kind of complete a loop. Safe Routes to School doesn't do a whole loop around the park because part of that loop isn't necessarily getting you anywhere to a school. So there's about a third that would be funded through Safe Routes to School and another two-thirds that would be, we would access other grant funding for walking trails. So that's another priority project. There's some other city park improvements. Bathrooms here in the park has been a conversation for a number of years, how people like to see improved bathrooms in the park and closer to where the little kiddos play, the playground. So there's some conversation there. It would be very similar to the new bathrooms that were installed in Sylvan. And also to complete any of the sidewalk path or the walking trail improvements in the park, there's two bridges there. And we know that, you know, with all the rain lately, we got to somehow get over that creek. And so the two bridges that, the one on Lincoln Avenue and the one within the park are areas where those bridges are going to need to be looked at. And how can we either widen them for traffic, but then also include a sidewalk as part of that? The county's role in one of those is that Lincoln Avenue Bridge. And this is not necessarily something to discuss here because there's going to be a whole lot of questions that I'm not going to be able to answer. But as, the way I understand it, it's a county road right now. Of course, it's right in the middle of the city and there's city property on both sides. So there's some conversation about is there a way? I know that's been a longstanding issue in terms of that street and that bridge. But if and when the time ever comes to replace that bridge or do some work there, that would be something that we would want to involve the county on. Again, from not just a street perspective, but how can we include a sidewalk piece to that to get across the creek on that side? And the last big project is what we're calling McReynolds Mill Park. Down here by the Saline River Dam, Steve McReynolds owns that property. It's been in their family for a number of years. And he has expressed interest in donating the property to a public entity. His only condition is that it's called McReynolds Mill Park. This is something that his dad actually put together a plan, we had drawings of it from 1972, that has always, for a very long time, been intended to be a park property. And so it's a really neat area. If you haven't been down there, I know people are down there to fish. We're really, McReynolds Mill Park, what we're focusing on is the south side of the river. Or the other side of the river, it's, the river's kind of at an angle there. But there's a piece of property there, so the idea is, you know, create an area to go down there to park, have a couple of primitive campsites. We're not talking a great fancy park by any means, but a primitive park where people are welcome to come. Like I said, it's a neat part of the community. There's very few opportunities for waterfront parks in western Kansas. And so, you know, I think it could be a very beautiful, a really great attraction for Lincoln and for the overall county. Again, where you guys come into play is, so if the property is going to be donated, who does that get donated to? I think it's probably from, if we apply for any grants, there needs to be some sort of public ownership there.
Would that be connected, that's connected right to the river there, right?
Yes.
On that south side of the river?
Actually, it's technically most sides of the river there, of the dam where the old mill was. And then on the south side of the river too, there's kind of a map in the plan.
Would we have to deal with a core of engineers or anybody like that? If we deal, you know, put some type of park situation in there because there, the river, they'd be involved, right?
Yeah, I think there would definitely be, I don't know if it would be the core necessarily, but more.
Kansas Fish and Game or Parks Department?
But there's grant funding that can help, you know, build out that park. That will be a key piece in terms of who accepts ownership of the property. And I think, you know, I've kind of put some thought into it, not necessarily anything to kind of present tonight, but I think when we get to a certain point, that is something where either the county or the city, it's outside city limits. But the city, in my mind, the city is, knows how to maintain parks because they do it here. Whereas the county doesn't necessarily in the business of maintaining parks. But since it's outside of city property, you know, should it be county? Or is there some sort of collaboration on the two? So anyway, that's something that will probably come to you at some point in the future to discuss in more detail. But like I said, it's a neat, it's a really neat spot down there that I think could be a wonderful amenity for the community. And then the last piece, we've talked about a walking trail in Barnard along the levee there. They've already indicated that that's, it's not a high priority for their community. And so it's not something that we necessarily get focusing on. But they do have great spots for a trail should they want to do that sometime. So information is in there, should a volunteer want to pick it up and run with it. That's left. Anything, anybody?
Other than like the little loop around the park also works with the frisbee golf.
Yeah.
Yes, so the frisbee, here in town, the frisbee golf course that was just put in a year ago. And the walking trail loop kind of mirrors that course a little bit. So you can kind of be on the path and know your way around the course as well. So again, the request for tonight is that the county commission support and adopt the master plan. That does not necessarily tie us to anything. It just, it basically means you support it and it helps us with grant applications. And then the next step is, like Jennifer said, you know, our committee, our project was, we want to get this master plan done so that, you know, all these projects that have been talked about for a long time and have people who are passionate behind it, they have the information, they need to move forward with it. So we really hope that people come forward, take the piece that they're passionate about and then run with it through other grant applications and so forth.
We need to sign something tonight?
I just, you don't need to sign anything, but a motion would be awesome.
Getting ready.
Were you writing a thesis over here?
I was scribbling.
Working on your PhD, huh?
Yeah, just a few things I'd like to say. Number one is, we all have different interests and I know that this is really popular among a particular group of us and I support that. And I think it's good that these types of grassroots movements happen for their own reasons and with their own passion. And I do want to support that. The only thing I want to qualify, sitting in the seat of someone who spends money, is that I'm not committing to anyone who sits in this seat after me to spend money. I feel like that's where our government has gotten in a lot of trouble, is committing to funding things in the future that we really don't have a handle on. So that being said, I'm more than willing to make the motion. I was just going to put a few qualifier words in there so that, so that no one is approached the way I've been approached in this seat, which is, well, they did it 10 years ago and they've been doing it every year before you. And so now you are committed to doing this in the future. You know, I really don't want to put that position on someone else after me. So that being said, I fully support the movement. I'll probably be involved on my own as an individual later on, at some point, I can see that. But from the county commission seat, I'm just not going to attach any future commitment to funding. And I'm going to make sure that that doesn't happen with a little bit of wording in my motion. So I'm ready to, do you have anything else you want to add?
That was good to make that.
Okay, I move to approve Lincoln County, Kansas Healthy Living Master Plan for the purpose of supporting citizen-initiated community projects to be funded by independent action on each project in attempt to complete this plan with no commitment of future county action or funding.
I'll say it again.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Good luck with your project. Thank you.
That was good to put that qualifier in there.
I feel like we've been putting that predicament a lot, you know? Well, we committed to buying certain things for so many years or we committed to, you know, the money isn't always there.
Had to make a vague motion, which could be dishonest truth.
Yeah. So I know that, I think Steve and I'm not sure, my mom, we came before asking the county about a greater purchase for the city of Sylvan.
Yes, yes. And they were working out a deal with the highway department, has that come about?
Yeah, so I guess I'd like to know an official price because different prices.
You haven't gotten a price yet, I will make a note.
I know that, I mean, Michael told me a price, I mean, the latest price was up 30,000 for that 95 cat, 94 cat actually.
Okay.
Because there's a Komatsu and there's a cat, we would prefer.
The cat, 90?
I think it's a 94.
Fourth, okay.
I should have brought that. We also have a grainer, it's a 12E, I'm pretty sure it's a 64, I didn't get that confirmation.
But we talked about doing a trade and then we would just put it with our equipment that we put on Purple Wave? Is what I remember, okay.
Yep. So yeah, I think we were just kind of wondering about moving forward with that. I don't know the value obviously of ours, what, have anywhere between up to 5,000 I think. But I don't, I don't know the value of it because.
Just write five as an estimate?
Well, in all honesty, you know, since we talked to you guys last, since I came to talk to you, both values have kind of moved up. A lot of interest has been indicated and apparently maybe ours is worth more than I thought it was.
Okay.
Your guys' came in a little higher than what we talked about originally. But I think what we're at is at a point where we just need to say, okay, this is the final number, number one. Number two, we talked about basically possibly breaking it into a couple of payments. And or swapping machines, you know, that's still back on us, do we think we could get more for it? You know, if you take it, you're taking a chance on it, it just, we need to make that decision.
Right.
Okay.
As whether or not we trade, trade machines with.
I do know that either way, the city's position in terms of funding is we would not be able to make one check payment for 30,000.
Right, right.
So it would have to be split up into probably four payments, preferably if we pay the whole amount. Otherwise, you know, if that grader goes towards the purchase, we could have a change that amount.
Okay.
And when you're saying payments, are you saying all in one year or are you saying over multiple years? Because I think we need to look at.
Yes, for our own budgeting purposes.
And whether or not we can actually do that, we'll have to research that.
Okay.
It, that would depend on.
The price, the ultimate thing.
Yeah, the price, yeah.
Why don't we nail down a price for us that we know that we're not going to sell it for any less than? Because we feel like we could sell it for a way of that. And you can still be looking on your own. And if this appeals to you and we get a real price, then you can give us your solid price and we'll have the option to do a trade-in. Otherwise, you sell your equipment, we sell ours and.
The one thing I might reiterate, those one we visited earlier. We talked about there's an abstract value that the machine will stay in the county and it would still be serving Lincoln County residents. And you know, early on I said, you know, we didn't expect you to give it to us, we're at a cutthroat price. But that also entered into the conversation, you know? Like I say, an abstract, what is that abstract value? That machine is still staying in the county and serving Lincoln County residents. So, you know, when you, when you get to the point where you're down to the brass tacks on what that final number is.
Okay. I'll make a request for Michael to bring us that number and then we can discuss that here with him and consider.
But we really can't do anything, you know, with our council, if you guys have a number.
I understand.
Then we have to decide, do we want to take the option of trading our machine to you? Or do you want, you know what I'm saying? Because when that initially came up, I flippantly said, you know, Aljo asked, you know, and I said, why do you want it? He said, maybe, that never entered my mind. And I can see where there might be a benefit there and why not. So like I say, we just, we just need that number to start with. So definitely we're interested and once we have that number, then we can work from there.
Okay, I'm sending email right now, Sophie.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one other thing, I'm sorry. So the bridge on Hawk Road?
Yes, yes.
I'm just curious with the, partly because of before harvest, is there any intention of fixing? Or at this point, I don't see how you can drive equipment over it.
No.
Which is fine, I don't, I don't care, which is more of as a.
I forwarded that concern directly to Michael O'Hare. I did not get anything back. And I, my suggestion was to at least get out there and assess it so we know.
It's a stone arch bridge with a concrete, I don't know if the concrete was added as a, to support it or if it was intentionally put, you know, I'm really just not sure about that. But it's just one side that's fallen out and, I mean, being that it's.
Is it, I think it's less than 20 feet span, isn't it, a 20-foot span?
Long?
Yeah, but long.
Long.
No, it's probably more than that.
Is it?
I would say it's 22. I could be mistaken, but I'm not one to ask for increments.
It must not be. It must not be. It must be close, but it would be right here somewhere here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not good with.
Yeah, because we, we don't have them identified as a bridge until they're 20 foot in length or longer. So it's still technically a culvert, but yeah. It's a really bad walkout, the entire south side of it has just kind of caved in. And they just put a barricade marker over it. But it's not, it's not two lanes wide anymore.
Like to get to our house, it's a four-mile jog to go the other way if it's on a mud road. If it's not on a mud road, so.
Yeah.
Or to the fields, decide it.
Yeah, yes, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do we still have people out in the hall, or has everyone kind of filtered in? Okay. Oh. Where are your pitchforks?
There's my little, I just made a basic, you know, which is nothing, I call, I could talk to everybody.
Okay.
I, I talked to Grace today, that's, we were gonna maybe, now just see if any of you comes and discusses stuff.
Okay.
I'd give her.
So that is everything that we had planned on the agenda. Right now, we're planning on having a little bit of an open forum, and I think we can pretty much question and answer. We'll start, yeah, we'll start with Randy's, uh, excuse me, Mr. Lowen's, um-
We've talked around this.
His correspondence to Mr. Grace.
We've been dealing with John Grace, who manages the Lincoln Park Manor, as most of you know, and, uh, we, we were wanting him to actually come here, since assisted living closed, as you know, in the last several weeks ago, we wanted him to come here and discuss with us the future of him managing it, and the issues we have with us, and maybe that we have with him. So I wrote him a letter, and he, but he wanted to have specific issues, or bullets, you know, to talk about, not just come here and be open forum, he just wanted, he wanted to have specific details. So I'm writing him a letter, and I'm saying, uh, please, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners would like to discuss the future of Lincoln Park Manor with you at a future board meeting. You previously stated you would like to have a specific list for this discussion, and these are the items that we would like to discuss. The rent, they're behind in the rent, if you don't know, they are supposed to be paying thirty-four hundred a month approximately, depending on how many people are in, in there at any one time, and it's not, been not been paid for over a year. Accounts payables behind, actually, they're paying, you know, those people in the community, and vendors' money that hasn't been paid. An appendix A, originally, on the original lease between the county and Mr. Grace, there was an appendix A, which was supposed to specifically state what he's responsible for paying for, like repair, like maintenance for the facility, like cleaning the floors, if a, if a, uh, the, uh, pot is plugged up, if he has to clean it with a drain or get a, you know, a cleaner in there, a snake to clean it. Is that his responsibility or ours? We've been getting some bills here, which sometimes Alexis and I agree with, our maintenance issues, what he should be paying for, but we get the bill, because he'll say, well, that's, we own the facility, the county does, and with that, we have to take care of the facility, which is like, if we need a new bathtub, or a new shower, or something, you know, physical, hard evidence, things like a stove, we have to pay for that. Well, with some things are borderline here, so this appendix A, we were wanting to point out, make a line, you pay for this, we pay for that, and we wanted to get more specific on that, because, so we don't have this, uh, mischaracterization of what we're doing, or who pays for what. And then also a child paperwork, what, what's that?
Change of ownership.
Oh, a change of ownership paperwork, which, uh, if we talk about if we keep the lease with him or not, and that's gonna, we will discuss that in the future. A buyout option, if we buy him out, he owns the, the business and the stock, or if we can maybe go buy, just buy the assets, but we have to discuss that stuff, if we, if we want to take that route, and our current lease, and also the assisted living status, wherever we're at with that, he still has a license to operate assisted living, but right now, it's, we don't know where we stand with keeping that open or not. So anyway, that's one thing, I'm gonna send him those issues on a letter, and then if he agrees to them, then hopefully we'll get him in here to talk to us commissioners with him, and then find out where we stand with him, because in a year from now, and the end of May, is the lease, his lease runs out. Now, I don't know if we would renegotiate with him, a new one, maybe, maybe not, based on the situation, and if we don't, then we gotta start working toward a new, uh, management firm, or a new administrator, who would be, well, maybe we would run with a board or something to that effect. But anyway, that's where we're at, and that's what I was going to talk about.
Before we continue, I, I think there are still quite a few people out in the hall. Maybe it's appropriate that we move the venue.
You want to move?
I don't know, I just, I don't want to leave.
I think it was left.
Okay.
Master living.
Okay, as long as everyone out there is okay, and doesn't-
You don't. Anyway, that's, uh, so we are trying to deal with this nursing home issue, and also the nursing home, people, some people have been heard that it's gonna close too. That's not likely to happen, first of all, if Mr. Grace would, uh, say, give us a ninety-day notice, uh, saying he wants out of his lease, we could, the state would step in, or we could actually have legal means too to prevent it, and not have the actual nursing home close. We could get, and the state actually had over twenty of them last year close, and they stepped in and found other operators to take them over. All but one, all of them are still running, except for one, and that was because of the actual facility itself had problems, so they just couldn't keep it operating. So, to keep, hopefully we will keep this facility running, and, uh, so the rumors that it's been closed is, I, I think are completely overblown, we would like, I would like to keep it running, I think the community would like to. Uh, how we operate it, I don't know yet, but, uh, assisted living is a different issue. He determined, you know, that he didn't have enough people in that, and basically gave them options to go to the long, to the full care, some didn't, some left, and then he said he only had three residents left, so he couldn't afford to operate it, so that's why he shut the assisted living down. So that's where we're at, with this Lincoln Park Manor thing. Alexis, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, I, what we have found out, we did do a phone conference in the open meeting with, her name's Patty Brown, and she works for the Department of Aging and Disability. She's in the licensing, she's the head of the licensing branch. What we did find out is the assisted living and the nursing home is all under one license, so there is no separate license for the assisted living. There is a requirement that the nursing station staff has to be able to hear and see down the hallway of all the residents, if you, in the assisted living side, if you want to just staff it part-time. So there has to be a separate designated twenty-four-hour staff person, because our assisted living is basically down the hall and makes an L, and they can't see through the doorway and to the end of the hall, therefore they have to provide a whole separate staff member for twenty-four hours a day. That, we figured, probably does cost about five residents to break even, so he may have been at the break-even point with about five, and there are nine available rooms, so his solution apparently, which we found out after the fact, was just that he was gonna ask the residents from the assisted living to move into the nursing side, and not operate the assisted living at this time. I did visit up there, and I found that four of the five within the first week had found other options for them to relocate. So, I'm not sure, I haven't followed up with that last person to find out what's happening there. At this point, the commission has no control over that, it's not a separate license that we can ask for, it's not a part of the business operation that we can run right now. That being said, what Patty Brown did disclose to us is that at any given time, an operator has the option to just sign the child paperwork. They don't have to be compensated, there's no other hang-up for an entity like ours to start operating with our own self-funded board or management firm. So, all of the issues that we're hearing about the financial distress of the situation, if that is true, then the current operator completely has the choice to back out of this lease that he's in, and the investment that he's made, and at that point, it just requires our signature, and the state would like to know that we have a management company on board, so that they're not issuing the license, transferring it over, you know, the commission isn't operating the facility, in other words, we're still owning the facility, but making sure that it's operated by a company with a license administrator.
How can he continue to pay rent?
He's not paying rent, and we haven't forced him. I have made motions to take that to court, we have not done that, and I will just say, in this open session, we have paid over twenty thousand dollars to an attorney out of Topeka, who I do not feel has made any progress with the situation at this time. Um, I, I'm not sure that that was a great investment on our part. It seems like it's given us some stall, it's maybe eased a few minds about the threats to close, but again, the threats to close only ever came from within this facility, it was never the county saying that we were gonna shut down the building, which is all that we own at this time.
And the past rent history was like, quite a bit, we, I, and also-
The prior owner had rent forgiveness done in the amount of about thirty-five thousand, and I'm using round numbers, so don't stick me to that, but then after that, there was an, there was an amount left owed and due upon the transaction with the new owner buying it, and he had made an offer to pay fifty percent of what was due, which I believe he was going to tack on four hundred dollars to each rent payment in order to pay fifty percent of the rent in arrears from the prior owner, which that has not happened, because that new owner hasn't paid his rent, nor the initial price to cover the accounts payable that he purchased to us. Does that make sense? Do you need clarification?
Did that make sense to me?
I know, I, I shouldn't have asked that question, it does not make sense, but that's where we are.
I just want to be clear, so the concern with you basically addressing the fact that he's not paying rent, is the fear that the nursing home is closed, because then you won't have it, you pick him out as a administrator and don't have somebody to replace him, I'm just trying to be clear.
Uh-huh.
If that's the case, and the nursing home is closed, because it asks for an administrator to be open, am I correct? So is that the fear, because I'm not addressing the fact that he's not paying the bills?
I don't know, I voted to take it to court, so-
I'm just, I'm just curious if that's the concern.
You could technically, I think, or if he, he could get out of the lease in ninety days, or whatever, or we could, I think, terminate it too, I don't, well, but, uh, but then we could get assistance from the state to help us operate it. But, but we're in the process too, we've been trying to get in different management firms, or we're just looking, willing to look into this to take it over, or, or if that comes to that. We have, and that's why I still wanted to, like this letter, talk to Mr. Grace, see where we stand. I know he's behind the money, we was wanting to, Alexis was ready to take him to court. I held off on that, because I'm thinking we can do that later, he can always sue, but if we do that, I think that would throw more, more, uh-
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, because-
You may not agree, Alexis, but I think it would throw more chaos into, we got a chaotic situation right, right? If you, if we sue him, that's just gonna blow, more, build more tension and chaotic, that's why I'm against it. And not that you're not right, maybe, maybe we need to sue him, right?
I've been personally affected, I think, I've been, the nursing home policy in there, policy no longer of the American, I'm not gonna pay almost seven thousand dollars, because she doesn't need that much care.
Yeah.
And so, at this point, I'm, I mean, I'm directly affected by it, so it does matter to me. So to me, I'm like, I've already lost that as an option, or I loved one, so I'm just trying to figure out what the reason is why he can't get away with not paying the bills has affected many people in the county, me personally, I mean, she's very upset, she doesn't understand why this is happening, so I'm just trying to figure out some, yet he continues to make money on the people in this county and their loved ones.
Well, that's what-
That's why I'm asking that.
You got, you got a good point, that's why we want to have a ladder deal with them, and, and I'm about, I just, see, I'm new here, and I just wanted to get to know what's going on. I'm trying to figure it out, Alexis and Aljo know a lot more, they've been involved. But, I agree with you, something's gonna hit the fan eventually here on this stuff, with him, one way or another.
I will say, Mr. Lowen had a legitimate point, the last time I brought this up, because I've moved for twice, and he said that if we do go to court, it could be drug out for the next year. So we're already waiting, the, the end of the lease period is a year from now, so do we sit in courts and go back and forth, and utilize our resources to be in court for a year before that's settled? Or do we come into the end of the lease, approaching it from a different angle, which is why we have been in contact with several management companies? I know that doesn't help your situation, and I'm sorry.
But I, but I'm just saying, I just, I'd like to see it rectified in a positive way, and that's all, because a lot of money of its benefits have been affected.
Yeah.
I mean-
Well, you got a good point, it's a, we, and you know, if we take him to court, it's gonna cost us money to do that. So say he's what, behind, uh, I don't know, a month, year and a half of rent, probably, hello, Alexis, something like that, it's like thirty-four, thirty-five hundred a month, so it's like, say, forty, fifty thousand bucks. It may cost us that much to take him to court, so we may actually not win no money out of it, it's just the fact that we would do that. Now, an accounts payable, now, he may be owing, owing money to a lot of people in this community and all over. That really isn't the county's business, like if he owes the, uh, the attorney-
Well, he owes the hospital for meals.
There you go, he owes the hospital, well, that's a county thing, we could sue him, but, but I'm saying, he owes attorneys money, he owes, uh, other people money, that's, you know, that's a different lawsuit.
He has public and private entities, many, many thousands of dollars, and I believe that my purpose for wanting to pursue taking it into the court system is because it can only behoove us in our claim that that operator is, what is the word that they like to use?
They like to-
Financially insolvent, there you go, thank you. If that is the case, if they're found to be financially insolvent, that gives the state every reason to come in and to take it over themselves, which they're still operating the one in Wilson, but I'm not sure that Elsberg County wants to operate that, whereas we have a unique situation where we are willing, at this point at least, to bring in a management company to continue that. So really, um, a reclamation by the state over that facility is probably in our best interest, and taking him to court and proving the amount of dollars that are owed only substantiates the claim that it's insolvent at this time.
Well, I said the county isn't running it.
Say again?
The county isn't running it, they're not collecting rent from it, he doesn't pay the bills, he's running it, he's milking the county, it's not.
And he's milking us, and if you're a businessman-
And you just kick the can down the road.
If you're a businessman like Farmer, you know, when you pay rent for a pantry, you don't pay rent, you get kicked out.
And in a court, when they give you a judgment for the rent, they give you a judgment for your court costs.
Doesn't make sense.
Well, we may come to that.
But Mr. Wallace couldn't make it here. So, is, is he gonna have to make up what he's behind with the smoke clears? What he owes the county, is he gonna have to make this money up to the county?
Well, that would be the judgment of the court on the lawsuit. Say we have a lawsuit because he hasn't paid us, the court would have to determine that with, he would owe us that much money back.
Well, the problem with that is, I think he has five corporations working up there.
Well, he probably has.
One liability corporation.
Yeah, so you can only, we're only suing this one.
What it said, he says, this corporation's wrong.
There's not necessarily any enforcement of a civil judgment. So, it could be, it could be a civil judgment for X amount of dollars owed to the county, but there's no enforcement attached to that, so as he continues to have his project in Smith Center or wherever next, which I feel like, you know, we should have an ethical responsibility to put it in the paper, that he is involved in a lawsuit, because we're allowing this future, I won't use any adjectives, but it's just, it's, really, it's on us to put a stop to it, that's why I've motioned to go to court. And I understand that it costs money, but we've already spent the money on an attorney, and he could have been working on the eviction paperwork for the last several months.
Well, I, I'd like to pursue this, and then if, depends on what happens here, maybe I'll do it, you know?
Are you gonna give him a timeline, is, I mean, how long until he has to come?
Well, he doesn't have to come here ever, if you don't want to, I mean-
Well, he doesn't have to pay the rent either.
That's true. We could, we could take him to court.
I mean, if you're giving, I don't, should we reach the response?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just have a question, because I know the, uh, a morgue trustee member at a hospital, and the hospital suggested that the hospital take the four corrupting thirty thousand dollars that they're owing the bills, and the morgue trustees seek to be against that, uh, because I guess we were there, so, um, because they feel that the county, they're gonna wait and see what the county votes. I'm assuming Mr. Grace, if he had offered the license for free, the county might have taken him up on that offer, I have no idea, but I'm assuming that he owes something, and he's not, if he was willing to give it to us, he might have made that offer already, and my question to you, is if the corporation owes the county tens of thousands of dollars, and the county worked to do a standard complaint with the court to seek, seek that rent, and he has to start paying his own attorneys, I assume to defend, because if you, if you don't defend, and the judge issues, I think it's called a default judgment, that's what transports you into a bankruptcy, which then gets the state, and he would lose, he would go on the receivership, loses that asset, which I assume he might be holding out to try to get a big check from, from the county. So my question is, is if he were to sue him in court, and he has to start running up his own bills, paying for his attorneys to defend against your lawsuit, would he be more or- more or less willing to try to charge the county more for something he wants to sell you? Or every month that he gets another bill from his lawyers defending in court, would he be less or more likely to sell his nursing home license for less? It would seem to me that once you sue someone, and they're spending huge amounts of money to defend against that lawsuit, whatever value is left in that corporation would probably be going down. Or he would have more of an incentive to, let's say, unload it while the county's for less, if his other option is to now fight the county in court for up to a year. And I would also argue that, nothing, that I'm an expert in bankruptcies, I've never had it happen to myself, but usually, as soon as one person files suit as a creditor, anyone else who's owed money gets spooked. And if they don't put a claim in with the court, they may be left out high and dry. So I just don't see the harm, because if the county's main goal is to save something, and I believe you have to keep the license, when you can't do anything with the building, maybe there's a better negotiating strategy to put some pressure on that corporation so that they would be willing, if the county commission wants to take over that license, to get it for maybe nothing.
So.
No, no, no.
I have a question, Dawn. Would you say then, if the, if there is debt owed to the Lincoln County Hospital, since our board is operating that hospital, that in turn is also debt to the county? So really, our cumulative debt from Lincoln Park Manor Incorporated at this point is the rent plus about, I wanna say it's about thirty thousand dollars in unpaid meal bills for serving the residents. Is that, I mean, it's our, it's our debt still? Because the county does not, or the.
I'm not sure about that, because they post every time, so I don't feel like I'd be confident that maybe it's for that.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know why you couldn't come together.
My question, I want to put Mr. Grace in here. Most of the time, those licenses are not transferable, so it ain't like he can hold that license and sell it to the county, if he was to relinquish his license to the county and have this life.
For what? License for what?
License for the ownership.
No, that's actually not true. There's paperwork, it's C-H-O-W, and I can't remember the exact acronym words, but it's change of ownership is what that stands for.
That's just a license.
That is just a license transfer, which every local, small nineteen-sixties, seventies-built nursing home utilizes that option, because applying for a new license, you have to meet all the new criteria that's been created in the law since those years of its inception, of when it was built.
Your grandfather.
Yeah. Yeah, it allows for you to be.
My grandfather, he didn't.
Right. So we actually want the transfer of the license, which is pretty much what's being held hostage at this point. Because, as I said earlier, he could sign that at any given point in time to whomever. He could find another buyer, and we have nothing to say about that, because we don't own that business.
Never.
Except for the lease. I mean, we're still in the lease.
The lease is, we have the lease.
Yeah, till next June.
Maybe it's the options that you've given us, and why that's not a feasible option.
Yes, um.
Is those well open to the legislature?
Yes. And the last correspondence that we received, he offered that we purchase his stock.
Yeah.
Which, in essence, purchasing Lincoln Park Manor's stock by the county would.
Give the license.
Well, if, if he would, we're assuming that that means he would sign over the child paperwork that you do to do that, but it would also tie us to any of the accounts payable, because you're purchasing the accounts receivable, but you're also purchasing the accounts payable. And the last that we were ever given numbers on that, it was half a million dollars in debt. So that was the offer. And then the other offer that came with that was, we can find a buyer for him. So we would advertise, or go to a broker, and try to find a purchasing agent to purchase that company for him. And I assume it's the same offer, purchasing the stock, which means purchasing a debt.
Unless we can't, we can't share a stock privately.
Right. We can't continue to just own a private business. The attorney has informed us that we have the option of converting it to a nonprofit, but that's a whole nother.
Without assisted living, how many residents do they have?
You know, we have.
They have about thirty-five or thirty-six by now. They've got several more in.
That sounds high to me.
Well, they did, they got two, several more in, I know, that's recent.
Well, we would know if we were being given census updates monthly that are supposed to be attached to the rent payment.
I was just down there talking. They were about thirty, they had like thirty-two, and now they have like thirty-four, I think. Somewhere in that ballpark, you know.
I just wondered if there wasn't making any money.
Well, I think he's.
If there wasn't any people in there.
Well, I think he is.
How does he have staff? How does he keep people working?
Well, he's, I think he is making money on the full care side.
He would be, or he would be in business.
Well, I think it's time for the county to defecate or dismember.
Well, I plan to, yeah. Well, we plan to. But I'm gonna talk to, I'm gonna give you this first, I'm gonna talk to him.
I'll stall you down the road another ninety days.
Well, we'll see.
He'll owe you three more months, right? He'll owe everybody else.
Well, okay.
Maybe he'll have gotten some more of the inmates up there. There's some.
Yes.
You mentioned that he would have had to leave by the state, he would have to make a, come back to the state, back to the county. I would think his debts would be so great after a while, that he could walk away free by just doing that, but you know, I.
Yes.
All the people, all this accumulating debt.
I mean, to my.
If he could just walk away, I would think that that's, you're not gonna give him a half a million dollars worth of debt. He's gonna reach a point, he's gonna do that ninety day deal.
But he's gonna, he's gonna work that every month, and I'm planning to get over that.
And he will, but there's a point when you can't function anymore.
Yeah, he'll just get his car and go off. And he'll get the cow.
We could still sue him.
One of the most interesting things that I've found is, along with some of these offers, and Dawn, I, those are the only, those are the most recent two, but you had a good point bringing up the different things that have been offered. One of the other things that was attached to that is that he would continue to be the management firm for five percent of the gross. So it is confusing, with a claim of an indebted business, how you can offer to still run it expecting to have an income from that into the future, from the landlord to whom you do not pay your rent, but you had a comment. Well, I agree with you. I do think the county should move forward, but I can't do that by myself, and we have had one meeting in Topeka, we sent our county attorney, that was to try and make contact to the K-DAD's department, who holds the license and can approve the transfer. But again, it is an ownership issue, because in other counties, the county's name is on the license. And so Lincoln County should have probably got that a long time ago, but that's the predicament that we're in now, is that it's privately owned.
I have a question regarding, we're already limited for our money. I suppose the hard part will come, if the county takes possession of the license or the business, the real hard part's gonna come after, when the county is now responsible for running a very, very challenging form of healthcare. Have you guys looked at the statutes for Home for the Ages that speak specifically about mill levy limits and what triggers notice in the paper, and options for protest petitions that would force the voter rep to write them, if you would be treating it? And have you discussed this, and would your plan be to use wind farm money to potentially plow those statutes that would all give citizen taxpayers some say before the county potentially took on, you know, half a million, four million? Because I believe you guys already funded Lincoln County Hospital, plus six hundred thousand dollars a year, and if the current nursing home is run out, I guess you said up to half a million dollars in debt.
Well, that's a one-time buyout thing. We were talking about if we would fund it, it'd be like two hundred thousand a year, about three mills, which, a subsidy possibly. That's what has been the discussion. Because some were saying, if you have like thirty people in there, that some new management firm could say, we can't afford to operate it for only that, below the number. So we, the county would maybe subsidize it. Now, that's, those were discussions earlier with our attorneys on doing that, but not no five hundred thousand. Maybe on the accounts payable, and that's not even that much down, it's down to three hundred thousand, I think. But to buy out the stock would go to them.
Will the commission consult with an attorney and familiarize itself with those Home for the Age statutes, so you know exactly what those mill levy limits are, and what would trigger notice in the paper or write for the regulations?
Well, this is a three-pronged conversation, because before that even applies, we're talking about taking money out of our general fund, which we cannot increase our budget by more than one, it was one point four four last year, so I don't know what this year's tax split is. So before we would even get to the issue of assessing an actual particular mill to subsidize that, you're talking about taking money out of our general fund in the form of a line item, which we've done all along to the tune of a hundred and twenty thousand. And so to increase that, we wouldn't even be able to increase it to the amount needed if, like you said, we were responsible for the rest of the difference there in the year.
We would have to put, like, the plan was, David, was to do a mill levy in an election, put the vote, a vote to the public, whether they would want to support so many mills, three, four mills, something like that, possibly up to two hundred thousand a year. That would maybe be on a ballot, and if it got, if it failed, then I don't know what we'd do, maybe close the nursing home down. I don't know.
We can't, I mean, that's a lot of money for the taxpayers, if you fix them up.
I know. I know, I know. Yeah, we do the hospital quite a bit, though.
I mean, there's a lot of suing laws out here.
I know. You're right, Jim.
But if I had to give up one, I'd have to say, you need a hospital, you know, you really do need a, a nursing home, well, like you said, the state.
Well, state could temporarily, but then they'd find another management firm to actually deal with.
Well, the one thing we did.
But we would, we could, we still have the facility, we own that, we'd have to keep fixing it. Yeah.
But what I'm saying, we have to have hospitals, nursing homes, you know, to be able to take over, you know, as long as you still have them.
Yeah, if it goes that way.
And it could go down.
Well, that's what, we have so many-ish questions here, I do. What do you like?
When they have the hospital. We just, we should see.
Well, I can tell you that, not this last year, but in two thousand seventeen, I believe, the total income to the hospital generated by the nursing home was eight percent of its gross revenue.
My relatives, that doctor, that health.
And I'm not discounting the portion, you know, proportion of their income that's generated by the nursing home. The clinic itself, I believe, is generating.
They're losing.
Well, now that they've, yeah.
But they didn't even do it last year, four hundred thousand. The hospital actually was in the black, I guess, in thirty, so we don't know.
I actually have that.
No, and I know, Jim, you're talking about the nursing home, saying we'd have to subsidize two hundred thousand, that's a lot of money. But, but, and one reason, I was born, and you've probably heard me before, I look for it because we employ twenty-five people full-time, and there's like fifteen part-time. And then, like, thirty of our elderly residents, parents, relatives, friends, and that, most of them from Lincoln County are up here, we support, you can go visit and see them. A lot of those people go to the hospital when they're ill, supporting the hospital. They're big time money going to the hospital, because if grandma goes in with pneumonia for a week, that's big money, you know? And so I'm not, I'm just saying, I know there's two hundred grand to keep an open subsidy may be a lot of money, but there's a lot of, there's two million dollars of cash flow comes through there a year. Two million input and output of support in the community, you know? And a lot of these pieces, a lot of businesses get money from this. So it's not just, we're taking care of thirty old people, and we're spending, it costs us a lot. And you're right, it does that way. But also, it employs a lot of people and supplies a service to Lincoln, too, you know? And what's that word? You know, and also, you know, we're looking for economic development all the time, right? We have Kelly Arson, I think she does a great job. There's a hundred-some-thousand-dollar office every year. And if we get one or two businesses in Lincoln, when we make, a new shop opens up down here, and employs two people, and we say, that's great. And it is great. But, so how can we afford to close a business that employs twenty-five people up here with two million dollars of cash flow coming through?
Randy, that's a strong end argument. It's not just one or the other. Another business can take that over.
I know.
But we're not doing it, no one's gonna do it.
Well, that's true. I just want it to stay open. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we have to do it by like two hundred thousand subsidy. If you could get another business taking over, or if anybody can, not you, any of us, that's great. I just want to see it stay open. You tell us how, and David, you've got a lot of great ideas, if you can figure out that out, that's great, too. I'm not arguing with you guys, I just want to keep it open, for, because I think it's valuable, that valuable to our community. That's all I'm saying. Maybe we don't need a subsidy, I don't know. Yeah.
We gotta keep it open at the taxpayer's expense, is that what you're saying?
We don't, well, maybe, possibly, and how much?
If it, if it can't take care of itself, why? Why do we have to divvy up money, you know?
Well, then let's not, then let's not subsidize anything. Let's get rid of economic development. Let's not give no tax abatement out here to US towers. Let's not do nothing for the, for the private sector then, okay? Because if that's that attitude, then okay.
Okay. I, I, I'm one of the few own wind towers. Anybody else here owns a wind tower? Anybody? Huh? Okay. You know what would have happened if we'd all been bullheaded like a few people? We could have said, no. No. And we wouldn't have had wind tower money. And we have people that way. No. We signed up. Yeah, we benefit from it, but we give up our right on our property that anyone, the people can come on our property, and they can come on us and tear it up, and we will not get damages. Okay, this wind tower money, that was a big thing. This goes to everybody in the county. No, no. We've kept it and hoarded it, and pretty soon, we give it to just certain individuals, interest money, and then whatever. I do not like this wind tower deal. Lincoln County has never done nothing, and we're only talking a few miles in the Lincoln County. And we're worried about the roads now, because you're tearing the roads up. We, what do we want? We want the wind tower people to pay for all the roads in all the county, or the two miles that they're in the county? What, what, and they got paid to re-shoulder some of these roads when the wind towers got done eleven years ago. What happened to that money? Never done a thing. They pocketed the money, the county did, in the wind towers, then, uh-oh, now we're worried about the wind towers again. What would you people do without the wind tower money? I want to know.
I don't know.
Did anybody ever appreciate them? No. They never appreciated the wind towers a bit. The money, and then we come up, uh-oh, we've got Lincoln District and Sylvan District. Okay, uh-oh, Lincoln has got the most wind towers. Bullshit! That should have been divided equally amongst both school districts, not just Lincoln.
Well, I wasn't here for that, I'm sorry.
You what?
I wasn't here for that, so why me for that one?
Okay, but look into it.
But we just.
I want to know.
Well, you were talking, okay, they gave nine hundred thousand last year for Lincoln School District, and about five hundred thousand to Sylvan School District to fix[1762.56] School District, and about five hundred thousand to Sylvan School District to fix the buildings from that wind tower money.
I know.
So, hell, there, you're getting your money back then to fix your school.
He's talking about, he's talking about the future payments when we resigned. There is now an allocation by a percentage per school district that that money's not gonna come into the web fund now, it's going toward the school districts.
Why, why wasn't it put in? It was made, that was a big debate. Every taxpayer in the county, it should have been taken a, a, a break on every person in the county. Oh, no, 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 we pick and choose, we start this pick and choose deal, and I don't think that's right. I'm, I'm in Sylvan District, and I got wind towers in Lincoln, and I don't think it's right that you give this county, Lincoln, more than Sylvan. It, it should have been, if it divided out kid-wise, I don't care. But it shouldn't have been, hey, we got more wind towers in Lincoln District. That's bullshit.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Al Joe Wallace is the one that negotiated that as a commissioner in an executive session with each school board. And I was not in the commission at the time, I think that was the year that I entered, or, you know, the year before I entered.
Don't, just, don't get me started on wind towers. Because-
That won't bring you up.
No, because you, Al Joe told me that I was the one, the only one getting the good out of it. Al Joe, I told him that time, I said, "You ain't got them on your property, how would you like to give up your rights? Everybody can drive on you." You know, Al Joe, he, he was a good school teacher, as long as he was a fifth and sixth grade school teacher. If he would have been a, a high school school teacher, he might not, somebody might have clipped him. And if he was there tonight, I'd tell him the same thing.
Amen.
Was he having a strict absence for tonight? I was just curious.
Jennifer, do you have something to say?
I was just gonna say-
We didn't find out till the meeting started that he wasn't coming.
She actually said what I was going to say, is Al Joe, my best support meeting, went in executive session with the school board and negotiated that on his own. Because that's what happened.
Right, and was there ever a motion-
Let me rephrase that, let me rephrase that. He discussed that with both school districts in executive session, that it's not open before, um, public to know what was discussed.
Right, and I don't even believe there was a motion by the commission that I found to-
So it was.
To approve the subsidy.
Okay.
And it's based upon, if, if this money had gone into the general fund and had been dispersed by the taxing unit, those school districts would have been by the taxing unit. So where those towers are laying out is in the taxing unit in which they are being taxed. So the school district, USC two ninety-eight, has more towers than USC two ninety-nine has. So if that money was being distributed, does that make sense? If, if we were putting it in the general fund and we were taxing or distributing it, if the law says it must be distributed based upon the taxing unit in which it comes into. So wherever those towers are at is where it would be taxed. So that's where they would have gotten the money. Whatever district those were, the city of Sylvan wouldn't have gotten any money, the city of Lincoln wouldn't have gotten any money, the city of Beverly would not have gotten any money. Nobody in the other part of the, uh, this county would have gotten any money.
So where would it go?
It would have just went to those taxing units. So those taxing units might be an extension district, the county, maybe a cemetery district, just depending on what you have, maybe a watershed district, um, there's a extension campus library, the fire districts, and then the school districts.
All this money, all this money would have went, just a certain, you couldn't, you couldn't take it off the tax roll?
No. If you distributed it based on the ad liborum law, the ad liborum law says wherever that kind of agreement is being paid for, meaning the taxing entities that created that is where it would be distributed. So we would have basically taken a line, just exactly like what we did when we did those tower, the, the agreement with the towers. And I'm sorry, I'm the one that proposed that because I felt like that was the most fair. That's where those towers are laying out.
Albert County, Albert County, they put their money into the general fund. It benefited every taxpayer.
So, so what did they do on there?
It did not, it would have only benefited those taxpayers.
But then people in districts wouldn't be paying any taxes.
No, they would still be paying taxes. It would lower their taxes, yes.
That works for nothing, almost, in that case.
Well, then they didn't do it according to state law. And they must have did some special thing, just like what we did.
And if all this was going into the school, why aren't taxes going up? Why, uh, don't they?
Well, they're not getting all that much money. Cause that, that negotiated amount was, what, eighty-five percent? I'll look it up, I'll tell you.
So, one, one commissioner can decide on these deals for everybody?
He did not decide, it was the board, the board decided that. He was the one that was voted to-
We weren't there.
That was before, that was before this term.
Don't blame us.
So I can't blame, I can't blame you.
Yeah, not yet, I would.
Not yet.
So are you saying you would rather see the web fund money be put into the general fund and be attributed for several years to the overall tax budget, is, for lack of a better term?
I think there'd be a lot of issues, like, John Drake's thinking there's a pile of money there. If there was zero, you'd benefit all the taxpayers, might have to get people or businesses to come into town after.
The, the problem with that was, was when the ten years was up. Then what did you do? If you already lowered the tax rate, you could count that, and your taxes at the end of the ten years would have went up.
Okay, I can answer to that, though.
Now, they did extend the ten years, but what are they gonna do after this ten years?
Before we read the numbers, I'll, I wanna reply to that. This is the same problem that we have on every level, state and especially the federal level. We generate an increased revenue for whatever reason, or a slush fund for whatever reason, and then we, we actually increase our spending to match the amount of income that we've just generated. So instead of doing any attrition planning, so that you can actually even those two numbers out later on, you just continue to spend up to the snuff of what you're collecting. So then what she's talking about is having a deficit to, to counteract at the end of that income coming in. But that's why the planning has to take place. Now, I said earlier, I don't wanna commit to spending money for a future generation or a future person in this seat, but I would commit to spending less money. I would do that. So, there, there is a way to do that. I mean, you basically have to look ahead and say, "Okay, this job is gonna be combined with this job in the future," and that's one person's benefit and a better pay. Right. Right, but you have to be willing to do that. You can't just add new positions every time, and, and everybody has a secretary, and then, you know, by the time the income needs to be reduced, then all of a sudden, you're cutting people, not amenities or materials. Which we've highly suffered in cutting materials in the, in the highway department.
So are you ready for the numbers?
One second.
What percent of the county's income comes from property tax?
Approximately, oh, of the county's income? All of it. Well, two hundred thousand dollars, give or take, comes from sales tax given back to us by the state, which is what we generate, it's the one and a half percent. So the count, so the state takes six and a half percent, and then Lincoln City Center's, what, eight percent? And the rest of the county's seven and a half percent? So anything that we generate in-
We get one percent.
One percent, seven and a half, but you get eight, but it's eight percent in the same-
It's eight and a half percent when you pay it, but then only, only a half percent goes back to the city, and one percent goes back to the-
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, the city takes, I was leaving out the city's portion. So-
But the property tax, I mean, it's hit clear over the hill, I mean, it's just-
That generates ninety percent, I mean, ninety-nine percent.
We get motor vehicle, uh, sales tax.
You can't even afford that on property anymore.
Motor vehicle sales tax is separate than the two hundred thousand generated by sales tax?
Fuel sales tax, yes, is separate. It comes into the highway.
What's the number on that, do you know?
You also gain ninety-four thousand dollars in paid income through the MS department. The just income coming in to supplement the MS.
Yes, we can let you use it, please.
Well, we, each department, like the health department does that, too. They have expected revenue.
Hospital takes in six million.
But he's talking about what portion of the, there's still a, a number to be paid. So the portion of the budget that's paid generated by property sales tax is greater than ninety percent.
Hang on, I could tell you. When I think about it, I can tell you. I don't know if any of you guys have your budget on you, or don't have it, don't you?
I don't, this is why I wanna finally-
We don't even know, do we?
I'll leave on page of the budget.
That ain't that big a deal, it's approximate, it's a lot, by default.
It's ninety percent better, but I don't hate-
Randy, do you pay any commercial tax on any of your property?
Not commercial, no.
Okay, that's what you get when you got a wind tower. You don't, you get paid, you get to pay commercial tax, and then you also get to pay tax on your property. So you're getting double taxed.
Okay, back to your question. Our budget is eight million, we'll just say eight point six million, five point nine million of it is, is levies. So that would be your ad liborum tax.
So, what do you think, Howard, tax, different double tax? Does that look like double tax?
They don't have any oil wells or wind towers.
You know, you know what, I draw the conclusion, Howard? You know, more, no more than this county appreciated the wind towers. You know what? I wish they wouldn't even have came in. And then, then we'd have found out what the county would really have. Because I don't think they appreciate it.
But where are you counting another one and a half million?
Uh?
What, what other one and a half?
Where are you ju, from five point nine to eight point six is over one and a half million.
That is what our budget is. Our budget is, we are levying taxes for five point nine nine zero mils. But our, our budgets are eight point six seven three mils. So that would carry, cap carryover, and then all user fees, and fees that we collect, service fees. The landfill, for example, is user fees, it's not by, it's not paid for by taxes, it's paid for by user fee.
A percentage of it, it's not covering itself, though.
It does not mean a tax levy.
But we're still allocating out of the general fund to cover the expenses for it.
No, we're not.
We've never generated more at the landfill than what we're spending to operate it.
Yes, yes, we're generating more. It is, it is a fund that is a self-funded, it does not get a tax levy. And if it needs to get a tax levy, then we, that's when we increase the user fees.
What was the carryover number?
For what?
For the, if you're saying it's sixty-eight percent, five point nine million out of the eight point six, how, what's the carryover?
That I don't, I can't tell you. That's just what the front page says.
Right, but I'm saying, the carryover number would make a huge difference as to how much we're actually collecting to subsidize that one and a half million versus what we just kept on the books that was already taxed from all of you prior.
You're, you're required to carry over a certain percentage.
But that's still tax, right, so I'm saying, that's still tax money generated by charging, not necessarily, you know?
No, not necessarily, it's also-
It always is, cause you're never collect, if you can't collect as much as you're spending, then you're always carrying over something that you already taxed.
Some of it is taxed, yes, but some of it is user fees as well.
But the user fees, if they're-
Okay, let's just stop, let's not argue about it, okay? I'm just telling you, what our certification says, our certification says we have an eight point six million dollar budget, and we levy taxes for five point nine million. He asked how much ad liborum tax was our, our, um, tax rule, right? And how much of that is? If you do the math, it's sixty-eight percent.
But you're counting, calculating a carryover-
I'm not arguing, I'm just answering this question. That's what this question is. Five point nine million dollars is what we levy for, for taxes, for the twenty twenty, or twenty nineteen budget. That's what we're generating. And that would be property taxes.
I have a related question, since the topic is property taxes. Many other counties in Kansas that use, for example, Thompson Reuters, which is the company we use for all of our county website, if you go to the website. Thompson Reuters has essentially a plug-in parcel tax database option that counties subscribe to that link the appraiser's office database directly on the website. So if any of us are worried or just concerned that the county may be taxing us potentially at different rates than similar property holders in the county, instead of me going to the appraiser's office, identifying myself, and having to pay a dollar per property that I'm interested in finding out whether they're getting taxed the same way I am, dozens, and I mean dozens of other Kansas counties, and not just big ones, but small ones, too, pay Thompson Reuters to link their appraiser's office on the website, so that anybody in the county can anonymously go up to the website, plug in anybody's name, anyone's address, including their own, and not only see whatever anyone is currently being taxed, but I think the most important thing for taxpayers is to see historically how we've been taxed. Because last, a couple of years ago, the paper had commissioners basically bragging that the mill levy came, the rate came down. But what the story doesn't tell is that valuations went up. And it, it takes two of them together. If the valuation goes up and the mill levy doesn't go down as fast, people's tax bills go up. And it's complicated. Most people, I believe, don't know how to calculate what their tax is based on their assessed or appraised value, and whether it's residential, crockland, this and that and the other thing. Well, if you're in Celine County or other counties, you can plug in any name or address, and it shows you literally the diagrams of people's properties, which is what the county has in their system, and going back five, even ten years, people can see, are their valuations going up or down? Did my, did my tax go up in this year or down that year? And I just think that, at the very least, cause this is something that has been asked in the past, can the county commission at least resolve to contact Thompson Reuters and find out how much it will cost the county to add that option? Cause I think it's pretty arcane, and personally, I find it offensive, that the county is essentially blackboxing this data. And anyone who's just concerned whether they're being taxed fairly have to go to the courthouse, identify themselves, and pay to get public record information that other counties make available for free. And I believe last year, it was an honest mistake, I'm sure, but gravel pit operators, if you own, if you own a farm and you have a gravel pit, you get like a certain amount of money from the county? Well, one taxpayer found out she was being charged five hundred bucks a year extra in taxes, and virtually no other gravel pit operator in the county was being taxed at five hundred dollar fee. Now, if they had taken it upon themselves to find that out, this could have gone on for years. And it makes me, as a taxpayer, wonder how many other innocent mistakes might be in that database upstairs, where some people are getting a free ride, and other people are getting taxed for every square inch of structure on their property.
That's a very good, very good-
I agree.
Amen.
Yes.
Amen.
Now, I would like to just address that just a little bit. Thompson Reuters also has software programs in which the counties purchase the software programs, and they run all of their taxing. So those counties that have that, have that seamless flow. We would not have that seamless flow. We would have to have special programming through our provider, and then we would have to buy for that piece.
All I'm asking is, can we find, can we at least get an estimate? Because if it turned out it was something that was affordable, and it would be a service to the taxpayers who are getting taxed, we said roughly five point nine million dollars, I just think it would be an incredible resource if I could go and see how much I'm paying taxes, not just now, but back in time, and then see if every structure that I'm being taxed, well, I'm being taxed on my chicken food. I'd like to know that everybody else in the county is being taxed.
Can I, can I ask you a question? What is a reasonable price? If it's five thousand, if it's ten thousand, or if it's twenty thousand, what's a reasonable price? Or we don't know. Well, you guys are taxpayers here.
How much, how much, how much do you think, how much should we pay for mobile three one one plus than the monthly service fees for this tablet?
I believe we initially put in about fifteen thousand.
Okay, so, I think we can afford fifteen thousand, don't you think?
Yeah.
Because we would use the Thompson Reuters, we're not using mobile three one one.
I think it's also about the government spending money on its own transparency and accountability versus spending money to do other things, as you've mentioned before, fund or subsidize private entities. You know, I would rather see the government spending its money to make it self-transparent, that's a transparency tool, yes.
I guess I would say is, I guess, I'd wanna know the total amount of money that the county is paying right now in its appraiser's office and its current software, and then perhaps at least-
Allocate a percentage of that budget towards that fee.
Because if, if we're spending, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more a year in salaries, and another fifty thousand or more in benefits, and their current software costs X thousand dollars a year, I'm just saying, we don't know until we know, so let, why not have Thompson Reuters? I mean, for all we know, I'm sure we're paying some kind of annual fees for their software, And you were mentioning that some of this information has to be like entered twice into two departments anyway.
Well, okay, let's clarify that. The county works on a double check system. So the appraiser's office enters it into the state Orion system, which gives you access free, but I think it's just the current year. Okay, so you can have access that free and charged with absolutely no problem. She has a link on the website. That's Orion, the state mandates.
Well, it's Orion.
It's Orion. They mandate that the appraiser's office do that. Then we get land transfers and we have what we call a tax software program where we track all of those state parcels. Then in June, they do final values, they certify to me, and then I import their file into my file and they mesh. And that's our double check system. If they don't mesh, then we have to find the parcels that don't match.
I guess the, the estimate that I asked the commissioner to look into, because I'm.
So the state of Kansas doesn't have a tax program site?
Right, but obviously the county's database system already supports export or we wouldn't be exporting into the ORCA public database.
No, they, they do, there isn't.
For the state.
It's a sort of separate maintenance. We don't, I don't have that.
Do we know, do we know for certain that Thomson Reuters has no way to take and export? Because you're getting an export from the appraiser's office right now.
But the appraiser's office has tax. They don't have tax to do. Because they, they just have value.
But they still have to.
We have tax.
But they still have to report like all our commercial residential, the ag land I can see would be.
They're only doing value. They don't do tax. I have a corporate tax site that is a member to the state.
Can we just ask Thomson Reuters for proposal? Consider everything and just have them.
Very willing to do that.
I don't care. Yeah. You know who they are?
Thomson Reuters, yeah, I mean, I think, let's, let's request that the appraiser do that.
There are also two companies, two primary companies that most counties are using. Thomson Reuters is one and then there's one other. I don't remember the name, but.
So the commission is in agreement to assign the task to the appraiser of researching options through Thomson Reuters for linking into their historical tax records on our website? What the cost estimate would be for that and what the options are? Are we in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion to do that, to have, to seek information.
Thank you.
He gets overruled today. Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, you, you, you think everything is fair up here above with this taxation? Like this gravel pit deal you, you brought up? Do you think everybody's treated equal?
Are you asking me?
Well, or whoever.
Don't ask me either of your board. I'm just the clerk.
Okay.
I just, I think that all systems, the whole idea of transparency and open government is it's a partnership between the citizens and the government that we elect and empower. And people are, are human and I didn't think mistakes, I don't think there's anything nefarious going on. I just think that right now, when there's only like two or three people in the whole county or a few people in the courthouse that regularly interact with all this data. The rest of us are blind in terms of that historical thing. And I'm just saying that whatever job is currently being done in terms of what we'll call fair taxation, I think it'll only improve when the citizenry is informed and can then use the data, then interact and improve whatever database they're using.
And to take that a step further, the state does not give you open records on sales history. So when you're getting a residential or commercial valuation based on local sales history, you don't even have a way to check that information. That's not public. So if I have a quarter and you have a quarter and they're similar and you're sold for half the price of what mine is being valued at, I have no way of knowing that unless, you know, unless you share information among one another. But in Pennsylvania, even sales history for parcel numbers is available at any time so that you can do a comparison on your own. Now, I find that interesting that Kansas as a state has withheld that kind of information.
I'm, I'm in a deal here right now. I really don't trust. I don't trust, uh, this is my daughter, if anybody don't know, that, uh, David is talking about. And I was pretty upset about it, but anyway, she investigated. But to tell me my experience, uh, and, and me and her went to Truett. And, uh, you know, I bought a county truck off the county highway department here a couple of years ago. It, it was an old district truck. I gave $2,000 for it. But anyway, so I, I come up here and I get a tag for it. And, uh, you know, I don't use that truck a lot. Uh, you know, uh, I put a 16,000 pound tag on it. All I haul is trash. Now, if, uh, if I'm overloaded, that's my problem, ain't it? Isn't that my problem with the law? But anyway, so I come and get a tag at the treasurer's office. It goes over to the, to the appraiser's office and pretty soon, uh, it comes back. And, and, and the appraiser office couldn't allow this because I put too light a tag on it. Well, the gal in the treasurer's office brings up certain individuals' farm that got trucks and hell, they were, they were, they were tagged the same as mine. So, oh, oh, we make a circle and we go back into hiding, you know? So I bring this up to Truett, you know, and, you know, he, he's pretty slick too. You know, he had all his bases covered. Well, he said, who done this? I, I don't want anything illegal going on in my, uh, my, uh, little den. And I, I wouldn't tell him. I wouldn't tell him who it was. I'm not going to tell nobody. But this happened. So are, are we getting treated equal or what's going on? Truett, he, I'm going to make this right. Well, Sonder already found a hemin lies with, with the other commis-, uh, appraiser in Elsworth County. So here we are. What, what, are some of us getting picked on? Hey, maybe it's because I got a wind tower. Maybe, maybe he's got a wind tower. We're going to pick on him. I, I don't think it was right. This is what happened to me. Now, what, has this happened to how many other people? Who knows? And maybe I'm the only one, but I don't like it. I do not like it.
I agree, you shouldn't like it if you got three of them.
Tagged 16 or 20M for a higher, uh, higher weight is, is considered personal property. So you get personal property tax on that because it's considered heavy equipment. My personal vehicle is tagged in the 20M so I can haul heavy trailers and stuff. So I can't tag that as a regular vehicle. I pay a registration fee to the courthouse and then I have to pay personal property tax on top of it.
Okay, the person that was bitching about this tag, the treasurer brought it up and they showed her farm, what that, that operation is using, had the same, same kind of truck, everything, and they had a 16,000 pound tag. 54,000 on a semi. You know what that covers? Nothing. And, and so that's okay. Like, uh, a guy told me one time, a cop told him, there's certain people that you just got over, you just got overlooked. We have plenty of those. But, but I don't like this. I don't like this in this deal here. And, and I don't know, I've been going through my taxes on my property tax and I don't know. I'm lost. I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do about it.
You're going to have to have your cows eat more grass than certain spots because they're paying more taxes on the spot.
Yeah.
Okay, Larry, I'm a fixer. Is, is this my natural, it hurts in me? I can't fix it if you're not willing to tell me who told you what so that I can figure that out.
Because that, all that would be is.
Because that's not right.
You, 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 you go, you go and, and same old thing.
But how, how can we make it right?
No.
If, if, if we can't figure out who or what.
You, you people all know, you know, you people all know in this courthouse what's going on.
I don't. You could have been better informed, Ms.
You know, uh, my wife wrote a letter to the newspaper here a few years ago. Jimmy over here, he remembers it. And, uh, you know, uh, Gerald Hill was going to approach a deal and, and it was all covered up. And so I, I'm not going to go no further. I'm just going to leave it at this.
I just want to say that you're right on, David, and we need better. I was, lived out of state for many years and moved back here and questioned my property taxes. And I questioned when this person came and valued my property as if it had been restored and was a bed and breakfast over by Wilson Lake. And I was being taxed on that. And I had three walls standing, you've been to my farm. You know, it wasn't exactly the same thing. And I went through a hearing and everything else and there's no, you know, it doesn't ever get fair. Because you don't get the pay money back that you paid out the window for years and years.
The reason I want it open and transparent is simply because, oh, I want it to be open and transparent and then everything else, true or not, should take care of itself. Um, the, there's a lot of rumors. I mean, part of the reason I'm like doing open records requests all the time is I hear rumors all the time. Sometimes the records confirm the rumors. Sometimes the records show that the rumors are not true. And all I'm saying is right now, it's a black box. Very few people in the county know what the individual taxes are. And, you know, you guys do abatements, I think that's the right word, when someone protests their taxes and then the commission approves essentially knocking down their bill. Now, maybe it's a state law, but I've always noticed and I know Lincoln isn't alone, you never read the person's name who got the abatement. And.
No, I do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I do.
I'm saying, I, I frequently see abatements being given, but I don't see who gets.
They don't put it in the minutes.
Oh, well, I apologize. I read them in the correspondence, but.
But all I'm saying, and maybe they're afforded some privacy, I don't have an opinion on that.
No, that's a totally public record, but, so Dawn, what you're saying is you just approved the abatements in a dollar amount and you always do the total, right?
Yeah. You guys just approved the abatement number in the dollar.
But I think that is relatively new. I will say, I think since I've been reading all the correspondence, I read the dollar amount and to whom and for what. I, I try to find out what it's for also, because we found a few things, I need to make a public notice. Um, what was the last one that we found out something had been happening? So I told them, I, I just made a public statement about checking notice. What was that?
About double tat, or they combined it, it was, yeah.
Oh, if you have two parcels here, for those of you who may not have heard this, if you have two parcels that were combined by the county, they do not have to notify you that they're doing that. So if you own on one side of the road and on the other side of the road and we combine it into one taxing parcel for our own efficiency, we don't have to notify you. So you're going to want to check your next year's taxes to see if those two parcels' numbers add up to the one fee, rather than you paying the combined fee plus an additional one for separated parcels from the year before. Does everyone follow that?
I'm going to drive a nose and I'm getting out of here.
I just think some people are more talented and more informed about taxes. There are people who know how to file abatements. There are people who know how to take advantage of every state exemption, that if they see someone, something's being taxed, that they have a right to not pay. Well, right now, we have a black box system where everybody's on their own and there's no information sharing and there's no way for the average taxpayer of one of, in this county, to really be informed and see whose taxes are going up and down and why. And if that database is made available, more people will ask questions, more people will become informed. And frankly, I just think deference should be on the taxpayer. If any citizen in Lincoln County is legally entitled to lower their own tax, they should be afforded every opportunity to do that. And the current system doesn't favor them. It favors people who can afford attorneys or can afford to read tax laws and take advantage of those loopholes and exemptions. And I just think that when I say it's being fairer, I'm not alleging that there's something nefarious going on. I'm simply saying that when everybody in this county has equal access to the same data, the playing field is leveled. So that if we see people getting abatements or we notice that someone's property's taxes is going down while ours might be going up, there's always a reasonable explanation for that. Well, that database will now make it possible for the average person to ask the right questions and become informed and take advantage of these laws equally so we all have, you know, the same chance to, to pay the lowest tax possible.
Can I ask a question? Is it better to be able to search it and find identified parcels? Or would it be better just to put the tax rule itself on as a PDF and you can search somebody's name and find it? Which is easier?
It, it's, it's not the whole tax that is, is the real information. If you've seen the ORCA system, tax valuation is very, there's a lot of numbers and a lot of pieces and parts that create your tax bill. And if you don't have those screens that show all the individual assessments and all the different valuations and the, and whether it's taxed as an A or a B, or if your house is treated as a depreciated property, or your house is treated like a new property. The, the ORCA has some of it, but when you look at how the Thomson Reuters system works for other counties, they're very detailed records of your own properties and other neighbors. And it takes some time. But it's, once the information's there, you take the time to read it, learn, ask questions of your neighbors. If there's inconsistencies or you're not, you're not being taxed fairly as you see it, that information is your tool. Right now, you don't have the information. The only thing you can do right now is go upstairs and get your property chart for your own and then pay a dollar for property and all, you know, like throw in dark, uh, dark. There's no easy way to start a database for half an hour or an hour. And this way, when we hear something, when you hear a. You can go online and answer those questions to yourself.
No, no, I agree. And then so what you're doing then is you're creating a position that then you do hopefully someday graduate someone that comes back to get that, but you don't start off. But we have the ability to combine those two, but just so we can do whatever we want.
Well, I, I kind of agree with you, because I think.
It gives us better, it gives us better information consistently, inconsistent information.
Okay, I have a question. Or, we have, we have a question for.
Just a couple of questions about EMS if, if I can ask.
Yes.
Um, you mentioned earlier in your reading of the minutes and approval of the minutes that you offered a position. And my understanding from what you said earlier was that position was a combination of human resources and EMS director? Uh, you've mentioned that you made an offer to that person. Has that, can you state whether that offer was accepted?
It is, it currently in negotiation.
Okay.
Um, it's not been decided and we were actually just talking about that, saying that on Friday, hopefully we will discuss that when Aljo is present, Mr. Wallace.
My concern with waiting until Friday to do anything is, uh, Kansas Board of EMS regulations state that you only have seven days to get a director in place once the previous director steps out. I stepped out as the interim director at 10 o'clock on Thursday morning after I delivered the payroll and, uh, bills to the clerk's office. So you're going to be pushing eight days by Friday. I, I don't want to put the EMS license in jeopardy. So I, I guess where I'm going with that is I'd like to see somebody else as an interim while you wait on resolution from these negotiations.
That's what you guys did, they put ourselves.
Yes, we put ourselves on the license.
Okay.
The board. In fact, we actually discussed just leaving it that way so that we don't fall into this same cycle of unnecessary pressure. You know, when you're deliberating or making decisions, we all know government is slow. So to have things be transferred from individual name to individual name doesn't seem as efficient as leaving it up to the board. And we meet regularly, so if there are any questions, it can come to the board. And then we don't have to wait on updates from an individual, especially if that's in a process of a changeover.
Just to make you aware, your, uh, Morse Pharmacy license, your DEA license and your CLIA form will also add. will also have to be changed into your names in a timely manner to maintain the license if you have to carry the ALS drugs that you carry for pain management.
Thank you. Did you have another question?
That was it.
Thank you.
This is my last question. Have you guys given any thought to appointing a Citizens Advisory Board for the Highway Department along the proposal that I provided the commission earlier this year? As far as a research group that would research those KDOT books and those KDOT recommended guidelines for low water crossings, grading techniques and the like, and, and make recommendations and reports to the commission and the Highway Department based on those, on the findings and those research?
No, we haven't yet. I've talked to you about it. No, I...
I'm in favor of doing that. I don't see how it could do any harm. I think we have experienced lately a surge in citizen input, whether it's welcomed or not. So maybe if we welcome it, it'll be a little better received. I do know that the same issues that I hear about presently were brought to me when I put my name on the ballot before I was ever even elected. So it's a fallacy to believe that there's some sort of riot incitement being done in order to, you know, round up the troops against the Highway Department. It has nothing to be, it has nothing to do with being against the Highway Department, which is how it's perceived currently. It has to do with concern for the overall goal and where the money's going. And I've said this consistently since we passed the last budget. The Director of Public Works brought us a budget that only allowed for a hundred thousand dollars worth of material purchases to put on the roads. And we've already spent that, you know, and we're not even halfway through the year.
Probably swept up the first two months of the year.
I'd have to look, because it's hard to keep track of the numbers in your head. And it's hard to even have a spread of everything. I don't know how Don does it. But my concern was, we knew, we had already discussed increasing gravel price, so we doubled the price that we were paying out to the landowner, but we kept the budget purchasing amount the same. So we knew ahead of time we were only gonna be able to purchase half of what we had purchased the year before, which wasn't nearly enough material. And we spent for the last five years over a half a million dollars every year on purchasing new equipment with a hundred thousand dollars worth of material purchases. So there's definitely some work to be done. And I think that's where a, a self-formed citizenry committee could be very useful. And also instituting 3-1-1 program. Did you get a chance to talk?
No, they, they, one guy called me.
Did you do the tutorial yet?
No, nobody's got them in tutorial.
Okay, so...
I'm meeting with the guy, well, go ahead, Lexis.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, on this 3-1-1, where hopefully get this going. Because, uh, the guy who we bought it from, or the management...
The company.
The company, well, you got with them, didn't you? And then they contacted me, and I said I would help to, he would give us a tutorial, would come and help set this up, step up and get it running and implement it. I could hopefully try to be involved with that. So that, that's hopefully coming up. One question I have, David, with you on the, uh, this board, what, just what powers would they have? Or what responsibilities would they have? Are they just a, like, uh, like now we have, you got the hospital board, you got the school board? Would they have, uh, what, in other words, would they have power to actually tell our Highway Department Director what to do? Or, or just give advice, or what?
It, it actually, I, I would recommend it start as just an advisory committee. And its charge is to basically consider everything, act, gather input from the citizenry. Uh, if mobile 3-1-1 is implemented and people can start using the citizens portal, that would be a huge resource. The committee could then be looking at all the complaints and pictures and try to prioritize. Basically, it's kinda like what the USD 298 did with the facility committee, when they were faced with a $5 million bond that failed, and $5 million worth of potential repairs to the school. And they knew they weren't gonna get the $5 million. So they started over, they created a, a committee, and its charge was simple. Identify the needs, prioritize them, and then make recommendations to the school board. And that we would have no authority other than to do that. And I'm just suggesting that, um, as an advisory board, its charge would be to... People who wanna be on this have to be willing to do research and read out what they've comprehended in this stuff. And then it come to consensus based on this information. But it, research, actual KDOT-sponsored research guidelines, like the Gravel Maintenance Highway Book that I've been posting pictures and pages from on Facebook. That I, I, I brought a, a couple hundred pages of, 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 of research papers done by the state that talk about low-cost alternatives. You, you had mentioned one idea that I think the Highway Department was looking into. Just research this stuff and then make written reports to the county commission on ideas that they think that the commission and the Highway Department should then either pursue, either by making policies, or, 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 I mean, the, for example, when you identify the problems, then prioritize them. The committee can then independently figure out conceptual budgets. How much will it cost to fix these bridges? Or to replace these culverts? Or to get training so that the roads can be graded according to the book?
I'll interject there that part of what I've tried to accomplish in making my own recommendations, at least utilizing the engineer that we have contracted right now, is to put some of these lists together. So for example, I've been asking for over two years to look at these stone arch bridges and culverts and see what we can do to do a mass repair on them. Because they're gonna cost us in the long run, they're all deteriorating at a similar rate, and they're going to cave in on us to, all together, which is a, a major expense that we cannot handle in one year's budget. So we just started getting some of these lists together. Priority list of bridges, things like that. So I see that you're trying to expedite that process, which needs to be done. However, my only objection to this is, you're already paying for this service to be done for you. So I'd like to see it be done. And I think that's not going to happen under the current structure. Um, you know, I, I'm trying to voice a little bit of the opinion that's brought to me by some of the ag-paying taxed citizens who, they don't necessarily utilize some of the other services and functions that the government provides. So they wanna see the roads be higher quality and better attended. And I will say this, on behalf of the county, you know, we have just as many square miles and linear miles of road as some other counties that have 10 times the money to spend on them. So we do do a lot with our smaller budget. However, I see room for improvement. And one of the things that I've been saying I would like to see is a better structure within the Highway Department as far as the supervision. Um, just to generalize it, I really think we've been paying two people to manage kind of wing and wing, instead of having a person who might make as much as two people does, but who has the obligation over the entire department to make sure that it's running appropriately, and is getting paid enough to not be hesitant to cut off jobs or to move people around appropriately. You know, I think that might be one of our prime options, is to take advantage of the fact that we have an open position right now that could technically be combined with the Public Works position. And the money's already there. We've already budgeted for those two positions. And I truly believe it needs to be one headed department. We kinda fabricated a, a, a position and put it over top of the land bill and the, um, uh, Noxious Weed Department. But the people that were running those departments don't do anything different than they did before we created that position above them. So I'm still confused as to why that position exists. And I feel like the road, Highway Department supervision needs to be unified.
And we've been discussing that before, about hiring another person, so we're in works on doing that, right?
We have looked at the job description, and we asked the current Director of Public Works if he would do some editing. And basically, what I found is a lot of the line items had prior said, assist the Public Works Director, assist the Public Works Director. So the edits that were primarily made now allocate those jobs that were in assisting to full responsibility to that position. I'm not really sure what that means. I really think that this is, this position to be over and above the entire Highway Department is more than 40 hours a week. Right now, we're not paying a salary and requiring the overtime. We're giving Fridays off to the management instead of making the management take that Friday opportunity to get their books and their, and their reports in order.
Do you have management now?
I don't know how to answer that.
Well, I've never seen a road boss out there in 10 years. What do they, what is their job? Hell, you know what my corner of the county even looks like?
I will say that I've noticed a pattern of behavior with the supervision that is basically, as the calls come in, that is how the issues are prioritized. And, and actually, just, you know, in past meetings, certain people have said they've called several times and not been addressed. I think maybe that's gotten a little bit better recently. But now, we're kind of in a state of reaction. There's no real planning, it's more of a reactive state. And that, we can't, you can't keep up with that type of approach, especially not with infrastructure. So I'm, there's a lack of long-term planning. Um, I was actually gonna ask tonight what the consensus is, at least, you know, here. What about using some of that web fund money to have a master plan for the road system? Where we could at least upgrade or, or redo some of the basic fundamental things that need done? Some of these call, you know, I'll go back to the tuck pointing on the stone arches for an example. You know, that could easily be a half a million dollar job to get a few of them, not a few, but let's say several, back in shape to last us another 30, 40 years without any...
Well, yeah, there's no reason why they shouldn't last 50 or 75 years if they've been maintained and looked at annually. Like, we make such a big deal about our steel bridges and red tag them, shut them down, and just kinda completely overlook the stone arch bridges. Well, guess what? They don't last forever with zero maintenance. And we got, we got machinery, and we're paying wages every two weeks, aren't we? What's the excuse not to?
But why can't you take the...
Why do I have to have a budget to do it? I mean, we're paying our health to do it anyhow, and...
They don't have the knowledge to do some of these, oh, the...
Well, I, I can stand some of that bridge stuff.
Why not just outsource those bridges out to somebody else like Travis Schwarzer that knows what he's doing?
But they get now the main takers, put the flag here, and never go back again.
Because they don't have the knowledge to do it.
See, well, let me figure out Travis or somebody like Dennis.
Yeah, Travis or Dennis Cross or anybody in the county that wants to do it, do it.
Because you're not gonna have anybody rebuild them unless they fall in, not today.
That's very true.
And look how long they've been there and what they've, you know, they've taken a lot.
Well, and I, I find it ironic that we pride ourselves on being a post-rock area, and we haven't taken care of our post-rock issues. I mean, that does disturb me. And I, I'm proposing exactly what you're saying.
And you're still keeping the jobs within the county and keeping people employed. You know, going outside the county, these guys do great work. So why not use what you got?
That was the last conversation we had, is that they were going to identify, hopefully on a map, where some of the bridges are that need to be bid, and what the details of that project may be, so that we can have those people come and do bids on them. It would be contracted work. Now, as for the other things, like you were talking about, people that we already pay to have on staff, from, from everything that I've seen from this seat, it's very much a lack of planning. Um, other counties have more plans, and I'm constantly told, well, you can't plan because of the weather. Everybody deals with the weather. Everybody deals with situations that arise that may fork their plans, but that doesn't mean you don't make a plan. And so we still don't have that plan.
But there's, there's all kinds of things out there that can be done without just, just hours of labor. I mean, it just, they've got the material to fix stuff, but it just...
Well, I didn't vote in favor for the four-day work week. Um, we had done that the past two years as well, and then this year, um, they, they wanted to do that again. And I had been approached by several people asking why the four-day work week applies to everybody in the department. And I got to thinking about that, and it makes sense, you know. Now, if you're operating a piece of equipment from the time you start till the time you quit, I can see why you'd wanna put in the extra two hours and maybe skip a day. Now, if it was on a rotating schedule, that'd be nice, because you may have overlap where someone could cover two bad spots on two routes, because it's their day to be on, and vice versa the next time. But it doesn't make sense to me why the administration in the department has a three-day weekend. I mean, no other administration in the county does that.
Let's rain and go home, and Friday, great roads.
Right, right. And the paperwork needs done, whether it's Friday or Monday. So I don't really see the point in that. And there's also the opportunity to have people in the shop doing repair work on the Fridays when that piece of equipment is not being used, it can be being serviced. So I'm not really sure why that is being pushed over.
Every, every single week, that it rains out on Wednesday, and Friday is a perfect weather day. Anyone in the construction business knows this, okay? You gotta make use of every fair weather day you have. And when you allow the entire department to be shut down on a weekday, it's, it's out of convenience. I completely understand why they need a 10-hour day when you have a longer daylight, because you'll lose a lot of time for setup and takedown. And I, I informed the commission, I called all 50 counties, or actually more than 50 counties, that were calculations 7,000 and fewer. And half of the counties have some kind of summer reduced work weekday. But there were counties that had done this and then transitioned either back to five-day work weeks, or I spoke to one guy, he said that they do half the, they want a three-day weekend, maybe for recuperating, because when you're working these long 10-hour days. But they just had half, half the department works on a Monday, and the other half of the department works on the Friday. And that way, they're at least getting some work done on those Fridays that's fair weather. And every week that they lose one other day to weather, they gained a day that's otherwise completely gone forever. And especially when people report a road problem on Thursday, they have to wait for this long weekend, have to wait until Tuesday for it to be resolved. Whereas if there was half a crew available on Friday, it would get done. Lastly, I, I'm the one who's been posting pictures from the gravel maintenance book on Facebook. Picture of what a crown and a slope and a shoulder looks like. Or information when windrows are good and windrows are bad. And I, I don't know if it was a coincidence or not, but on Thursday, the Highway Department dispatched a team of men to 165th North Road. I'm the only resident who lives on this mile or so stretch of road. And they had a grader with an attachment, a tractor with a sheep's foot, and I believe two highway supervisors driving pickup trucks. And they were there pretty much not only all day from above noon on, I believe they put in overtime, because they were there well past the time that I believe they would have normally shut down. It wasn't my intent to put information on Facebook to get the department to prioritize 165th Road. I'll tell you, it's one of the better roads in the county, all things being relative. But the irony is, they, 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 they made the road technically worse in subsections than when they started. And if the intent was to clip the high shoulders and put a proper crown and a slope, and most importantly, have those sides of the road where the slope ends, you need to increase the pitch into the ditches, that's what probably this road has been better, is it has ditches. Well, when they were done, maybe because they couldn't finish, maybe they're, they're gonna come back and do more work, or they ran out of time, when they ended substantial stretches of that road, the shoulders are now level. I'm gonna take, I'm actually gonna take a two-by-four and level, and I'm gonna plot every 100 feet of that road and actually see whether or not, with all that attention, they actually graded the road according to specification, or they just eyeballed it. I don't know the answer to that, okay? Parts of the road look pretty good, other parts, I'm not so sure.
Just puddle in the middle.
And, and obviously, I've made this argument, water always flows downhill. You gotta have a crown. They recommend 4% grade, which is a half an inch per foot. And then right at the edge of the road, it's supposed to have an increased pitch before the ditch occurs. And what happens, and this is very common, even on our better roads, the, the sides of the roads before the ditch begins is either level, or is actually bumped up an inch or two. And then, of course, you know how I feel about the overuse, what I believe is an overuse of windrows. When you pat two feet of earth on the side of the road, there's certainly... When you pack two feet of earth on the side of the road, there's certainly no shoulder for it.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to that, because I've spent a little bit of time asking some questions about this lately, because I have a different blade operator on my route, so that there is, there are a few things being done differently. It comes down, and I, and not necessarily for your road, but for a lot of road, it also comes down to the amount of material that they have to work with. So there's no use in asking them to clip the shoulders and bring up a bunch of sod into the middle of the road to form the crown when there's not enough aggregate material to actually mix into that to allow it to pack, to form a hard surface, to then retain that shape. So it's a twofold problem. I mean, I think we have some operator issues where maybe a particular route is not being cultivated to have the proper crowning and ditch ratio, et cetera. A lot, I think a lot of that also has to do with, as you're traveling down the road, you can notice where certain driveways come in above the road and certain driveways come in below the road, and you have to allow for the variations there as far as, that's, that's more of an art than it is a science when it comes to that kind of a thing. So I will say, it's a twofold problem. If they don't have any material on the road to pack into their crown, you're just asking for another rutted, muddy mess, again. So my suggestion is, we look at a master plan. We look at our major collector routes, we look at those highly traveled areas. I've been harping on 120th because I've gotten calls from everybody that lives and uses that road, lives on that, that road and uses that road. That's a highly traveled road that really needs a better plan of attack, not just patchwork every time. You know, but then sometimes you find out, you said about rumors, I don't know if it's true, but you hear that so-and-so makes a phone call and they rush out with three vehicles to fix one pothole that needs done, because it's in front of that particular person's house. So I don't know where the consistency is, but I'm gonna go back to the structure of the supervision. We have this supervision that seems to not ever come back to one particular position, and it needs to, because that person needs to be accountable, they need to be willing to work more than forty hours a week, and they need to be paid at a rate at which they're not afraid to take control of the issues. And I don't think we're offering that. I don't think the commission has created that, and it's our responsibility to do that. I think we've let, the commission has let other people dictate who sits in those positions and what their responsibilities are and what the scope of their work is going to be and how that, how that's acceptable.
When my father did the job many, many years ago, he worked Monday through Friday, and he was the only one that was in charge, and it seemed like things went a lot better than they do now.
Were they allowing the operators, the equipment operators, to do a four-day work week during the Saturday hours?
I remember back to...
Just out of curiosity?
Yeah, I was young, but, you know. Yeah, and I don't, yeah, he worked Monday through Friday, that's all I know. My dad worked, you know, Monday through Friday.
I'll probably have a really mad at me, but one of the things that I really dislike about the four-day work week is on Friday, when everybody complains, they call...
You have to do it.
We have to answer the call.
Well, that's why, I mean, I don't see the reason to shut down the office. I see the reason that you might not have all the graders out every Friday, you know, or do the Monday rotation, some get a Monday off, some get a Friday off, but to be answering phones in the department can be five days a week.
It just, it, it frustrates me. We don't have as much call volume as what we used to have, you know, now that people are used to it, but it, we want to be able to help the person, but you can't make an angry person not angry when you can't help them.
But it's not your department.
So it's, it's very hard. And how they end up calling us is because they call the commissioners' line, you know, they're hoping to get the many commissioners and looking at their phone too.
Well, and I'll also say, I get many phone calls on my cellphone or at my house, and they're issues that I can't personally address. I can't get into my pasture, or this bridge, you know, is caving in, et cetera, et cetera. I can't necessarily go out and do anything about that. So then, I go to my email and I send an email, and then I really don't even necessarily get a response. We have to bring it up again at the meeting to find out what is done and, what has been done in hindsight, which if that's on a Thursday, the Monday meeting, nothing's been done. So it takes me two weeks to catch up with an issue that someone reported to me on my own line.
When I did the survey and spoke to all these counties, several counties that did have the work crews not working on Fridays, still have the office manager working on Fridays. Some of them, I believe if I recall, and I think Ottawa, sometimes it helps if you quote a neighbor, I'm pretty sure that Ottawa County does a Monday through Thursday schedule, but the office manager works on Friday. I don't recall she works all day, but she works, I know she works part of the day. It was definitely Ottawa, I think, and it wasn't the only county, and it was basic, I assume, it's because they have transactional business that occurs, they, they might be getting deliveries, there might be, they have to keep the, they don't wanna shut down an entire essential department.
There is plenty of paperwork to be done. I've actually been asking questions about that too more recently, and just the amount of time that there is spent doing data entry for the maintenance records for each vehicle is significant, so there's always something to be done paperwork wise.
Well, it's totally not fair that the clerk office is covering the phones for the highway department on Fridays.
And I, I don't, I don't want it to sound like I'm complaining about that, because I don't want taxpayers not to call us, because they think, oh, gosh, that's complaining. Because I don't, I don't want the taxpayers to stop calling.
Well, let's be, let's be, let's be completely frank and say, you're an elected official, if you wanted to shut down your office on every Friday, you could. So is it, is the commission going to continue to allow our branches, over which we have authority, to make those kind of decisions?
You just call forwarding, they have two people, and one could be one weekend, one the other. That way the phone would ring and they would have know there was a problem and they would know.
Have to go respond to the situation.
You call Carico Implement, and there's somebody on call that's called forwarding. You call them and you never get to say that they're rotating, and you, you tell them what you needed, they go to the shop, they get it for you.
I know with all these, all the rain we've been getting, there's doodles and gobs of culverts and bridges and, uh, there's no reason why somebody should be working Friday.
Yeah, flooded spots.
I went in the day to the shop, and I get, you know, upset about something, like right now, there's this concern out our way that goes on East West Road, and the road's gone. There's nothing there. I mean, it's gone. And it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen. If somebody from out of the county goes down that road...
Are you talking about a washout over the road?
Yeah, they're gonna roll their car, because there's that much in all the gravels down in our field, so, you know, they're gonna have a wreck. There's a lawsuit waiting to happen. So I go down to the shop to tell them about it, I said, can I have a flag? Can I mark it as a concerned citizen? You know, because I'm gonna get sued if the county gets sued, the taxpayer gets sued. So can I go and mark this? Because, and then our water shed dam has ran over the road, you can't even get down that road, because there's water over the culvert and over the road. Can I bring that back and put it in the road? They've got a deal there.
So what was the response given to you?
She said, go ahead. She said, go ahead and put that back there so that they don't go down that road, use that road, the secondary. And I said, well, can I mark that other thing? Because if, if you don't, somebody's gonna have a wreck. You know, you're gonna have liability, a lawsuit, right there. And it comes right back on all up.
So it becomes lawship.
Mr. Attorney.
I can maintain our operators. I mean, it's like she's talking about, and I got a spot just on the same road you get down, and I hadn't seen cattle for two weeks. But don't they come back to the shop at night and report to the road boss that, you know, we gotta get some gravel hauls into that where it ran over the road?
I mean, now...
Yeah. Shouldn't they, shouldn't they be reporting that?
The moment your driveway road ran is...
Again, it's a twofold issue, so I've been told at this table that each individual blade operator is responsible for his hundred miles, including culverts and everything else I asked about. Now, on the other side of that, if you talk to the operating personnel, they can put in a request that is not necessarily fulfilled. I'm gonna say I have a problem with the structure, again, that's a lack of structure there. Now, the one thing that was brought to my attention is...
That deal hers, that blew out a year and a half ago, and it's never been...
And it's never been addressed. And, and granted, part of...
Or they oars them all clear down to the dirt.
Yeah, and part of the problem is the fact that the farmer, and it's got farmer calls, it's a person that they use, doesn't do proper care of it. So when it, whenever it rains, everything comes down across the road, because there's nothing to stop it. But then you guys keep coming and you keep passing it with gravel, well, then all that gravel's down in our, in our field, you know?
And they try to take some of the winter off.
And it's, it's a nightmare road. I mean, and it's not, it's not the county's fault entirely.
Is that that, Chris, is that that one east of your place?
It goes over to ground edges.
Yeah.
Which we have a new person, has tried to buy the house, well, this person might have to get to town. How are they gonna get to town when they don't have a road? Because they can't get out. It's dirt roads all the way around, they're not gonna be able to get to town.
And that comes back to not having a map that shows priority routes. I mean, we can look at all these maps that are printed by the appraiser's office, and they all say something different, but the highway department doesn't have its own prioritization notating where they have continuous problems. I mean, you're gonna know just from that, just like we have the issue where we have gone and put new culverts in by Whacker's Farm, you know, those are gonna be continuous problems, and every time you have a year like this, it's, it's a red, it's a red light zone, you know, it's like...
It's going over years though, and this is a bus route memorized.
So you have to...
That's pretty well priority.
Yeah, it's a priority work. It's a bus route memorized, the family's gonna move in, if they're not be able to get out again. We had the family left that thought, I'm getting out of here. I can't even get to the highway, you know? That's probably what they thought when they left.
Well, it's a management problem, isn't it?
I, I had a conversation with somebody this weekend that does dirt construction, and they're working in North Dakota right now, and they said in North Dakota, he said he'd seen a Facebook post and he was asking me about it, and he said, you know, I told him, I said, I keep being told that it's like things are getting packed. He said in North Dakota, where he's at, that their county runs motor graders that have rollers on the backside instead of grappling arms, they actually have a roller that when they're laying the gravel, they lay the roller on the back, so it has more weight and it's packing it in, and he wondered if that wouldn't be a problem, if that makes sense. Does this person want a job as a public works director? No, because this person makes probably three times the amount more money than I make, so...
There's a picture in the gravel maintenance highway book that shows those, there's a lot of attachments, those graders have all these attachment points, they, they have the rear attachment, which are basically rollers, which actually will, for what they need, would do a better job, when they use that sheep's foot, which has those big pegs, it tends to tear through the surface as well as compacting, and what happened when they used the sheep's foot on 165th Nor, Fifth Road, because they were trying to essentially rehab the road, they weren't building it from scratch, that sheep's foot, when they were done, the road, the road was actually looser, it was very bumpy, and they, they had the, the grader was going too fast, maybe towards the end of the day, so you had those forty-five degree divots, or they call washboarding, but washboarding is separate, when it's a forty-five degree angle that matches the moldboard, it was caused by the grader going too fast, according to the book. And when I came home that day, I almost went off the road. If anyone knows, like when your pickup truck, your rear wheels start bouncing and your car actually starts floating...
You get used to it on one, one day.
I drove a forerunner, and luckily I wasn't going as fast as I often do. I hit that corner where they had just put those forty-five degree divots in the road, and I, I have stability control, and I almost floated off the side of that road. And I told Mona, I was saying, you know, I was worried someone would be coming down the road that evening, but luckily we had torrential thunderstorms, so it, it was no way anyone's gonna drive fast down that road after that road, that water hit. But there's all sorts of attachments that this county could look into for their graders. Culverts, they make attachments that go on a grader, where if you are literally just having these hundred-mile territories where the grader guy is responsible for this, is he supposed to like get out of this grader with a shovel and try and clean out one of these culverts as possible? I've never seen that, I've never seen, however, however, but there's attachments that you can actually put on a, on a, on a grader, it's like a robot arm, and from their control, they go in there, it's like, it brings out...
It's like an auger.
Yeah, and it's got, and they're, again, it's kinda like the Thompson lawyers thing. Find out if these attachments exist, find out what they cause, and, and evaluate what, imagine if every one of those graders had a covert auger or whatever it's called.
Well, I've also been thinking, there's, there's the option to contract out a few things, and one of that would be covert cleaning. You know, if we have not been able to, to do that, to the point where now it's so backed up that we're asking our grader men to take time out of what they could otherwise be doing for maintenance, just to go back and get things back into form, you know? When you have stumps and logs and trees blocking the culverts and they're packed with dirt, so the hole is now one-eighth of the size of the culvert, that's not gonna be a simple task for someone. So we could look at doing something where we contract out to a company and just go around and clean them out. At least do the major collectors, then the next year, do the minor collectors, and then go around and get the...
Do any gravel runs first and then move to the dirt roads and...
Exactly. And that's the kinda thing where, you know, for several hundred thousand dollars, it may be worth it, because if we are having issues just buying enough material, which we really need to reconsider in our budget this year, then we need to maybe contract out some of that work.
This is what the advisory committee is all about. Someone, Dawn makes a suggestion, has, has anyone looked into putting wheels behind, the, the wheel rollers behind graders? I've seen lots of suggestions come up during these county commission meetings, and someone, and it's not always the public works director, somebody throws an excuse out there, and it's just taken on fact, and then it just gets dismissed out of hand. And complicated problems often have complicated solutions, and if you have a advisory committee where someone makes the suggestion, where they hear something said during a Monday morning meeting, and you can't afford the time that it really requires to fully vet out these ideas, evaluate all the pros and cons, tackle all the excuses or reasons why it won't work or it will work, that's the thing that the citizens committee can do, because they can call the manufacturers, they can call other counties, they can read the book, and then they can give you guys a report, a written report, that hopefully covers all the objections that someone might make, has all the pros, all the cons, all the costs, and then the commission and the public works director can actually look at this report and then act with some real information. Because no offense to you guys, when you try to do it all verbal every Monday, lots of stuff gets said, sometimes some pretty ridiculous things get said that have no basis of fact or science, and it's just a forum, it's just, you really need a, a group of volunteers. If the highway department is unwilling or unable to do it, charge somebody, if you can find the volunteers, to start putting these, these ideas and solutions out there.
I'm going to support your effort and your thought, but I'm going to reiterate that we are paying for this. And if we don't establish some boundaries and some expectations, then we're wasting your money asking you to do the job that you're already paying us to do.
Maybe we oughta, maybe we oughta contract the whole highway department out. How about that? Just contract the whole thing out, that way then they do a good job, because they wanna be efficient and get the job done.
They do that in Canada.
Where?
In Canada, I've got a present law that has...
Now, if we don't like them, you just fire them, you fire them, you have no benefits, you have no employees. Well, we ain't worried about employing people.
I've got a quick question for you. You're talking about gravel, you know, and she keeps saying about the gravel, there's stuff they put on our road out there that goes up our house that, I don't know what it is, come from out of landfill, that stuff is incredible. And yeah, it was a little bit of a pain, we had to walk it a little bit and pull some stuff out of it, but now it's perfect, and that stuff's set up, and we have the best road. How much did it cost to do that? For how long? How long, how long did it take to do it? And why, why?
Is this little concrete culvert out the landfill that crushed up?
Well, I said that stuff's something else.
It's been concrete that was collected over years and years and years that they piled, and then they paid to have it crushed and magneted to get most of the metal out.
It's pretty impressive, because like I said, we don't have any trouble.
I know they've had several spots that they fixed like that with that material, and it's done a good job. The key now is not to disrupt what is settled and hardened, because once you disrupt it, and then we get this flowing issue where things flow off into the ditch.
But see, it's even working on the curb that goes around the curb, you know, you got water running through there and it's still safe. And it's had a rough winter and a rough spring.
Either, either we need, we need a budget for a gravel testing machine?
I don't know, can you buy it?
Or would you consider...
We should just buy it from court side, they're ready, they got different levels.
Okay, that's, that's very good thinking, right?
They, they got different levels of gravel.
You know what that caterpillar loader costs? We have no use for that.
Right.
About two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars plus on an operator. I'm not down, I'm not, it's not negative against the employees, but you can get rid of it. Employee for what, fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, or less.
Well, what's your, what's your health insurance?
Depends on the benefits and everything, yeah.
Well, isn't it close to fifty?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, and don't forget the bulldozer, same way, another fifty thousand, plus, that's about another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar piece of machinery. Right there, you got five-hundred thousand dollars worth of machinery and a hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries.
Yeah.
Does anybody ever do math on that one?
Yeah, and I agree, because quartzite, they can get, they get different degrees of K dot grade of gravel.
We all got it.
Yeah, well, they just put some brand.
Well, you used to have a little.
Well, right up up here at the, at the, down at the landfill, they just redid that. That's real nice gravel. They got it from quartzite, and it's just.
Well, their cost.
I don't, I don't know. It's a little more expensive than our gravel pit, but not that much.
Mine were six-hundred and seven ton, but that's.
I don't know how much it cost.
Sure, it's better than the.
Well, it has more, it has sand in there and rock instead of that clay. See, our trouble is now with our gravel pits now, we say, they say, well, we don't know what we got there, and then we put it out there. In terms of that clay, that greasy clay crap, which, you know, the Zaco pit, Steve knows. And, and I'm at, all these gravel pits, I was mail carrier out southeast of town, that was slime, too, and I told Michael, we gotta be, that stuff's dangerous. And if we can't determine what type of gravel we got in our gravel pits, we should close them down and go to quartzite.
Well, that's many, that's many.
Or, or, or have a way to test them, like you said.
About two dollars, you could buy a, a mason jar, and you could do a quick test.
Well, I don't, well, maybe so. I don't know. Maybe, I don't know how to test it. Maybe you're right.
Google it.
It's in the books.
I will, later.
There's tests, and there's, there's how to guys.
It's simple.
Well, it seems like every, seems like all of our pits have this clay gravel, which, and they say, well, we're running out of good quality gravel. Maybe that's true, I don't know.
But then next time, you gotta get the farmer to let the gravel go.
Part of the trouble is, is you, and within one pit, you may have some good gravel, but then you get over here, twenty yards over here, and it's clay crappy stuff, and they, we don't distinguish it, and we don't watch and be careful about getting it. And I know I'm upset about that clay crap, too, as much as anybody. I was mail carrier, and I'd drive a hundred-twenty-five miles a day in that crap, after rain two inches like today.
Pretty soon, you're not gonna, mail carriers are gonna refuse to deliver.
Well, no, I know. It sucks. And I, I have that, too, and I'm almost thinking we should almost go to quartzite, because they got a quality, you know what you're getting with, you get with that.
I'm sure the management could go out there and make a deal with them on X amount of thousands of tons.
Maybe we should, yeah. Then we don't have to deal with, then we don't have to deal with these gravel pits, and we don't know what we're getting for quality.
You have consistency.
Yeah.
Steve.
Steve?
Yeah, you talk about the clay, you know, and that's what happened on my road.
Yeah.
Over half, I mean, it's just.
Slime. Way ranged, no?
You can't, it's, it's worse than mud.
I know.
Take hills of power on a pickup, you, you can hardly go in it. You can, the great thing about it is they sloped the road like he's talking. They crowned it, they sloped it, but now you can't stay on it.
I know. Well, maybe we need to discuss that. I'm upset about these gravel pits. And I can't believe we can't find some good quality gravel somewhere. We used to. Is it all gone? I don't know.
Park County uses all the sand.
Well, yeah, we need more sand in our stuff. I'm wanting, I've talked to, I've talked to our highway guys about getting farmer screenings. That's why, 'cause a lot of us got that at quartzite. It has small rock and that sand, and it hardens up around my driveway. It makes a good quality, good quality stuff.
And you also need to mix it as it goes on. You can't layer it. You can't just put that slimy gravel and then sprinkle the sand on top. You have to actually apply them together.
Well, farmer screenings is blended together, Alexis. But no, I'm just, I'm serious about this going to quartzite. 'Cause it's like a gravel pit, you know, Union, that got hauled in that day and had slimes on there, Steve, this component. Well, if we can't guarantee our gravel pits' gravel's any good, you know, we, we might as well just turn to composing pits.
Well, yeah, 'cause they're, well, we pay a hundred dollars.
We're paying two, two, two bucks a yard now.
No, the lease that pit from John Brown.
I don't know.
They're only, most of them are two years, maybe three years, but the lease doesn't.
Well, then we.
But I'm saying, there's not, there's not a recurring expense.
Then if you go to quartzite, all you need to, you go to quartzite, all you need is trucks, just truck drivers. You don't have your dozers and your loaders and.
Don't tell us, tell the commissioner.
Yeah, well, I'm talking, I'll talk to the commissioner. Oh, I'm one, too, I guess. They may be one. What the hell am I doing in here? You guys gonna let me resign tonight?
No.
I, I need a raise. We need a raise, Alexis.
We can do that.
Yeah. No, I'm just joking. No, it's, it's tough with these roads, and I know you guys, with this weather, it's tough. You farmers, Jim, I know you guys pay big taxes, 'cause big farmers pay the bulk of our taxes, 'cause they got the land. I know that. It's, it's tough. And, uh, we're trying, we're working on it. It's tough to, and you have a lot of good ideas, David's got a lot of good ideas. It's hard to implement them overnight here, you know. We got a lot of stuff we throwing out here tonight. Now, we just, we need to prioritize, too, what we need to get done, 'cause we got ten things going between the nursing home, the hospital, the highways, the roads, the EMS director, the HR director, yeah.
Regardless of how it sounds.
Just like I'm suggesting that you have, charge your appraisers' office to have Thompson Reuters do a proposal. You know, companies will write you really good, almost free proposals when there's a chance for business. Why not ask APEC to provide the county a proposal? Let them look at the county road system. Let them take a look. Let them estimate how many thousand yards of material per year they think you ought to buy. Let them specify the correct mixture, 'cause you're talking about mixtures, you gotta have fines, you gotta have the, the rock, you have, have to have a little bit of anything, these magical parts that make a binding mix. Just ask APEC to provide a plan and a proposal at a cost. I'd be very surprised if they wouldn't offer that to the county. I don't know if they'll offer it for free, or they'll, they'll, they'll need to charge for sign engineering time, but if you get a number from APEC, this is how many thousand yards of this mixture that they can sell the county, then like Jim was saying, you can take that proposal cost and figure out, well, how many people is the county employing to operate dozers, front loaders, trucks, to pull this sometimes questionable material out of, out of these gravel pits? And if you can get more quality fill brought out per year through a private contractor, you know, who's to say that you necessarily are necessarily mixing people? Suddenly, those people might be able to be repurposed for other prioritized needs within the highway department. I mean, that's your decision, but I'm just saying, I know you keep saying, well, when can we implement these things? There's only three commissioners, you only have one public works director. APEC, you could call them up tomorrow, or ask the highway department to ask APEC for that proposal, and they would do that work. You could have that.
Did you have a comment in here?
Regardless of the way it sounds, you two are doing a good job.
Well, I don't know about that. She is, I don't know about me.
I'm gonna take all the credit I can get. No, it's not easy, and.
Well, we, we don't have the answers for everything, that's for sure, but we're trying to, we're trying to find, you told us, yeah. Okay, well, just do what you said, Jim.
Thank you for the evening meeting, and Dawn, thank you very much for working all day, and I stayed here all night for this evening meeting.
What? Now, Mona, I can't, who are you?
Are you going to regularly plan a evening meeting?
We'll see. I don't know if I can recover from this one, yeah.
Please have more of these. A lot of people came who can't come during the day.
Yeah, how many people?
We had at least twenty, twenty-five people.
Yeah, maybe, maybe so. I'll have to see, just see about how often.
Of course, I didn't get people to go in for me.
It was, yeah, good attendance. Thank you for coming. I appreciate the input.
Yeah, thanks for coming. And we're trying to deal with some of the stuff. It's, as you know, it's, just like this nursing home thing, it's a mess, of course, and what to do there, I don't know. You got about three or four different, five different options you could do. You could close it, you could get new management, you could keep same management, you could get a board to run it, you know, what do you do? I don't know.
Well, the sixth option, to keep going like you're on, isn't an option?
No. Well, we, we're gonna, maybe till his lease runs out, we'll see. Maybe we need to talk to attorneys about, you know, I don't know.
There might have been some out in the hall that I didn't see.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
I'm going to adjourn until Friday morning at nine AM.